All right, I'd like to call to order the January 14th. Happy New Year, everybody. 2013 meeting of the San Carlos City Council. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Changes to the letter of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
No changes this evening from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Council Communications and Announcements. Where should we start? Anybody ready for that? Nothing? Karen's trying to think. Mr. Brusili, you got anything? Nothing? Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir.
Nope. Ms. Clapper?
I'm drawing a complete blank on what I was going to say because I didn't.
Okay. Well...
Maybe we'll come back to this at the end of the meeting.
Okay. The only item I had is something that I had called the mayor about over the holiday season. And I thi-- well, no, I called you and I talked to the mayor, or, excuse me. Yeah, now you're confusing me. I talked to the vice mayor and I talked to the city manager about the traffic enforcement over the holidays because it was my memory that we had adjusted that at one point. And I saw our traffic control people out there on Christmas Eve. And so I've asked the city manager to look into that and bring back something for us to discuss. Is that where we are with that?
That is where we are. And in fact, I'll send an email with the attachment out to the entire council. But we do have resolution. You're correct, that was a change the council made a number of years ago. And then the council made a second change and they changed it back.
Okay. So we're back to...
The current status is enforcement on Christmas Eve.
Okay. All right. So we may want to see that again and take another look at it. And that's what we're going to do, is we're going to bring it back for a discussion item?
That's not the plan right now for the council to bring it back for a discussion item. It was just to answer the history. If the council would like it to come back, then we'd look for direction from the council this evening on whether or not they'd like to agendize that topic in the future.
Okay. So right now, we are not, we don't overlook traffic enforcement on Christmas Eve and, I guess, New Year's Eve, correct?
Correct.
We could. All right. Well, I'll just leave it there. If somebody wants to have that discussed, speak up now, I guess, if you want to take a look at that. Or you can bring it up another time if you want to think about it. But that's where we are right now. Okay. And then the only other thing is, I just wanted folks to know that we do have the State of the City address. It's a little out there. There's other things. There's, in January, we have an event. I don't know, what do we call that, Greg? The, where we're going to be awarding Mr. Eaton his...
Recognition Gala.
Chamber of Commerce Recognition Gala. That's right. Yeah. I only picked on Greg because he's looking right at me. So that is coming up in January.
January 22nd.
And you can get tickets for that if you're interested in attending through the Chamber of Commerce. It'll be over at the Hotel Sofitel. And then a little further out, in February, on February 21st, is the State of the City address. That'll be, I think, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Hillary Aviation Museum. So you might want to mark your calendars. And that's given Ms. Clapper enough time to think.
Yes.
Here she comes.
Thank you for letting me collect my brain cells together. One of the things I wanted to mention was, I went to the CERT Holiday Potluck Supper that they had in December. And it was really great to see people come together from Belmont, Redwood City, San Carlos, Redwood Shores, people that have gone through the CERT training for, you know, emergency preparedness over the years. Some of them are a group of, came out of a group of 40 who were just recently trained. And really, really neat to see the camaraderie of that group spanning across the different communities. And I just wanted to commend Jim Skinner and Kristi Adonis for providing the inspiration for keeping the community group together like that. It was really great to see. And the other thing I wanted to share is, I received a notice about a presentation of the, from the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee. It's going to look at their, the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Guidelines. And that's going to be presented this Saturday, January 19th, from 10 until noon, in the Menlo Park Library Meeting Room. And we'll look at best practices in transit-oriented development with guidelines recommending practices and features to make projects near Transit Livable Green and minimize car traffic. So for anyone who is interested in that. Those are my two items. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That leads us to Item 4, which is Public Comment. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address to the council on items that aren't on the agenda. And I think I have one speaker card from Jenny Zhang, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jenny, Jenny Zhang. I'm actually a volunteer from San Francisco. And today, I'm here to invite our mayor, vice mayor, and, you know, the council member to Xingyun Performance. It's the best classical Chinese dance and music performance in the world. Yeah, well, you know, Xingyun comes from a nonprofitable organization in New York. And they travel around the world, try to revive the 5,000 years of civilization of China, which, you know, already got destroyed by the communists in China in the past century. So, you know, in March, they will come to San Francisco, to the Oafan Theater, and you will see more than 100 artists perform here with, you know, a live orchestra, which combines the eastern and western instrument together. And you will see, you know, like, more than 400 sets of beautiful costumes, all handmade, all original. And they bring lots of myths and legends onstage in life. And, you know, this is the thing, well, actually, you know, the audience found the show not just, you know, like, I mean, beautiful and entertaining, but also uplifting and inspiring as well, as they present the universal value. And, you know, the ancient wisdom from China, like, you know, respect to parents, loyalty, and dignity, the truthfulness, compassion, and all these messages. So, you know, they go so down in Lincoln Center, Kennedy Center, some of the top venues in the world. And in early January, they come to San Jose and also Sacramento, they go so down as well. They just finished a tour in Argentina. They had eight performances there, and people just love it. And everybody, when they went to Canada, you know, the prime minister and the senior government officials give them the highest prize. Yeah. So...
So very good. So that, if, just to summarize, then, there's a, there's a performance, you said, in San Jose?
Uh, they already had a...
They already have that. Okay. So the next one coming up is in March in San Francisco.
San Francisco.
March, uh...
From the 23rd to the 27th.
23rd to the 27th.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for coming and letting us know.
Yeah, thank you. I actually have a, okay, I cannot display the video. So here's the newspaper. I have, like, sorry, I only have four copies, but I can share with everybody. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you very much.
And I hope everybody can make it for March and, you know, to support a noble mission as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another speaker.
We do. So we have another speaker for Public Comment. Dimitri Vnderos? Vnderos, sorry. Couldn't read that quite right.
Hi. Just a quick point. In, along East San Carlos Avenue on the east side, there are a number of Quonset Huts. And, and there's been, you know, quite a bit of turnover in the businesses that are in there. Those Quonset Huts don't have any insulation. They don't have any, you know, they're, they're not up to date. And what I'd like to request is that the council consider conditional use permits whenever there's a new business moving in to ensure that what's there isn't, isn't going to create problems with the existing neighborhood. And that's it. Just, just an idea. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. That concludes Public Comment. I don't have any other speaker cards for that portion. Next item is Item 5, which is Reports to Council from Staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Christine Volin, Director of Community Relations and City Clerk. Tonight, I'm here to provide a brief report on the upcoming vacancies on the Transportation and Circulation Commission. This commission is actually comprised of a, it's actually a result of combining the former Bicycle Pedestrian Committee and the former, former Traffic Commission. Each was a five-member commission, and it morphed into the Transportation and Circulation Commission for a seven-member commission. As you recall, back in 2010, the council reduced the number of years a commissioner can serve, down from nine years to six years now. And in exchange, a volunteer could apply for another commission to service a new six years without penalty. So the bottom line is, we have four transportation commissioners terming out in March. Staff has begun, begun the recruitment for these vacancies, and you'll be conducting interviews around that time, late February, March. That concludes my brief presentation. I'm happy to clarify any points I've made tonight. As an aside, we've, we're actually scheduling a volunteer recognition in May, so we can volunteer, so we can recognize current and past commissioners for their volunteer service to the community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I do have three speakers on this item. Margaret Pye, Jack Baumgartner, and Thomas Fellody.
Hello, I'm Margaret Pye. I'm currently the chairperson for the Transportation and Circulation Commission. I'm pretty alarmed about the fact that of the five of us, four are due to be termed out in one, in about a month. I think this is going to be devastating to the city to have all this experience and hard-working people with a background with the Transportation Commission all departing at the same time. I also think it's going to be a lot of work for the Public Works Department and for you all to interview that many new candidates. I also feel sorry for Jay Walter, our fairly new Public Works Director, because he would have to be orienting four new commissioners all at the same time. I, I'm really hoping that you can come up with some kind of a loophole in municipal code or some kind of an exception that will allow at least a couple of us to remain serving on the commission for a transitional period until the new people become more experienced. In addition to that, I just wanted to mention that I'm actually against term limits as a concept. I just don't understand what purpose is served by having the four of us who are very hard-working and experienced people who have devoted the last six years to becoming knowledgeable and experienced in this area, the transportation of the city of San Carlos, having us all depart at once to have four new people participate. It just, I don't see any upside to having term limits. But the municipal code seems to have a discrepancy in it because the section that pertains to the Transportation Commission specifically does say that we're allowed nine years, three three-year terms. I understand that municipal code also says that all commissioners in the city only have two to three-year terms. So that discrepancy was, is why some of us didn't realize until very recently that we, that the four of us were going to have to leave. So I'm imploring you to come up with some kind of an exception so that we don't have, lose four of the five of us at once. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Baumgartner, and then Thomas Fellody.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Jack Baumgartner. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 27 years. I live at 291 Chestnut Street. I've been a member of the Transportation and Circulation Commission for almost six years. I'm not here to repeat what Margaret just said. I do want to offer a recommendation, however. Before I do that, let me, I'd like to name a, tell you a little bit about this commission. It's not just an advisory group that meets once in a while and gives advice to staff. This group has gone out and been hands-on. They've done a lot of work for the Public Works Department, for various groups like Safe Routes to Schools and others. I'm going to name a few. For example, early on, we all went out and surveyed each of the schools in San Carlos to identify requirements for crosswalks, curb cuts, for people with disabilities and women with strollers. A lot of that was used over the years to identify intersections that needed work. We surveyed all the bicycle lanes up and down Old County Road and actually did a design of the, of the lanes and the parking situation. And that led to the grant that's leading to the East Side Connectivity Project that's coming up soon. We participated in the Holly 101 study to try and make that a better, more accessible route for people to come and go from the east and west side of San Carlos. And we're still fighting that battle. We worked with Parrot Schools at White Oaks and Arendelle, setting up the original Safe Routes to School program and also going out to get some money to support some of those programs. We started with hometown days and the art fair and other San Carlos functions, actually going out and running, setting up the bike parking and running it ourselves. We prepared and coordinated and wrote and coordinated the whole bicycle transportation plan, which will be the basis for grants and monies going forward for traffic and street improvements in the future for many years. And we've worked with the Public Works Director on many, many other projects. So it's more, we're more than just an advisory group. And this particular set of people are particularly attuned to the regulations that regard bicycles and cars and traffic and things that go on in this city. So a lot of experience there that helps. So what I recommend is, if you decide to do something, as Margaret suggested, probably the most obvious thing is say, well, let's keep two of them, and two of them extended for a year or two. Okay, I'm recommending that you don't do that, that you extend all four of the people for a period respectively of one for one year, two for two years, and one for three years. That has a lot of advantages. One, there'll be a continuity of all these projects, like Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza, Holly 101, and the East Side Connectivity Project. It'll provide for a better overlap of the old and the new. It'll make recruiting a heck of a lot easier and give everybody more time to get the right people into this. Because three of us on this commission are bicycle and pedestrian advocates. We go to a lot of meetings with other groups involving these programs. Well, finally, if you toss all this out and you decide to let all four of us go, you need to figure out some way to keep the gal that just talked in front of me, Margaret Pye, on the, on the commission. She's, she does an extraordinary amount of work and puts in an incredible amount of time and effort for the good of this city. And if you lose her, you're really losing a tremendous asset. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tom Fellody. I've been a San Carlos resident since 1993 and a member of the Traffic and Circulation Commission, back when it was first called the Traffic and Transportation Committee, I think, since 2007. And I, I can't repeat or do better than what my previous two speakers have said about this commission. But all I can say is that one of the things about San Carlos that I think I like and many of the residents do is that there's a nice blend between the various modes of transportation. And it's kind of what keeps this city alive and vibrant without becoming too, too much like Palo Alto perhaps, or, or Burlingame, or some of the other cities and towns up and down the peninsula. And so the, the commission members that are currently sitting have developed a balance and a feel for this, this, this environment that San Carlos residents seem to like. And I think that's probably what you're going to, you're going to miss or lose if you, if four out of the five of us get termed out right away. So as was mentioned here previously, you have various options available to you. One that perhaps is also worth mentioning is the fact that the rule as currently written with regard to term limits is, is, could be modified to some extent to, to take into account this particular situation. So that if you, you've decided that term limits are what you want, you can have them, but, but also provide there some means of escape so that if more than a majority of the members of the commission are being termed out, that, that there's an additional part of that regulation that says that some of the members can be retained. So this will allow you to keep the current regulation as it is with just a small addition to it to prevent the kind of disaster that we foresee here. You, you kind of got to wonder to yourselves why the members of this commission who, you know, don't get paid to spend their hours, you know, once a month with, at various meetings and so on. Our last meeting went till, I think, 10:30 or so. So why do we do it? Because we like it and we really think we're contributing something to the city. And we want to continue doing that. We want the new members to be able to do it as well. But to term out four out of the five of us at one shot, I think is going to be a big disaster. So we appreciate your consideration in the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So what I'd like to suggest to the council after hearing this is, you would like to speak on this item?
I'm a clear San Carlos resident since 1958. I didn't know this was going to be discussed, but I, I do want to echo their concern because I've been to the different commission meetings and they do seem to be very knowledgeable and they don't have very many people that usually come to those meetings. So you probably don't have a very big backlog of people that would be really qualified to fill those seats. So I hope that you will figure something out.
I feel a new connection with Bonnie. I was born in 1958. I don't know if she heard that, but...
Nope.
We used to be neighbors.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. I think the city manager wanted to...
Yeah, I'd just like to point a clarification, if I may. It was mentioned that there's a discrepancy within the municipal code on this item. And there is technically, but the legislative intent is that, that the last action of the council is to apply term limits to all the commissions in terms of six-year timeframe. So what would be required is an introduction. If the council wanted to change this, the real issue here is the council's policy, which is codified, on term limits for commissioners. So if there's a desire on the council to take action on this item, we would need to get direction tonight to agendize at the next meeting the introduction of an ordinance amending the code to allow the council to extend commissioners beyond the current six years, which is the, the hard and fast deadline in the municipal code. And that would take 30 days from introduction to go into effect, so it could go into effect by the end of February.
So does that mean that there is an action we could take that would impact these particular seats, or no?
There is an action you can take that would allow you to, to continue the current constitution of the Traffic and Circulation Commission.
Okay.
At the next two council meetings.
All right. Mr. Volin.
Mr. Volin, if I may. I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. We could, we could take an action that would, for example, extend these terms indefinitely or on a short-term basis until we can revisit the entire concept of our term limits. Is that correct?
That's correct. You could do one or both. Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I personally would like to do that. If, if you don't mind, I'd just like to take a minute and mention that I've been on two commissions myself. It's a, it's a rewarding job and it's, but it's a thank, it's a thankless job. I was on the Planning Commission when no one came to meetings. And I was on EDAC when no one came to meetings. But a lot of important things are discussed, as, as Mr. Baumgartner said. These people come to the, I mean, these people come to these commissions as volunteers and, and they have a lot of knowledge. I know that, I leaned heavily on the other planning commissioners when I was first on. It took me one or two years to get my sea legs. Same thing with EDAC, although I wasn't on it very long. Had I stayed, I, I very much value the other, having other people who have been on a long term. Frankly, I don't know why we changed this in the first place. I, I wouldn't mind going back to the old system where you served nine years, you were reappointed after three, you know, three-year terms. I, I would like us to have that discussion and put it on a future agenda. Now, how we go about, you know, straightening out the issue tonight, and if anybody wants to amend this, I welcome it, but I would like to propose that we extend the terms of the existing commissioners indefinitely until we can figure out a, a longer-term solution.
This item is not on for action this evening.
Right. Okay.
So you can give us that direction that at the next meeting, that you'd like to see an item come forward that reflects that recommendation.
All right. Then I, that's...
Let me take a shot at this, if I may.
That's what I like to do.
What I'd like to see on the next agenda is an item that, for action, that would address this circumstance specifically. Number two, that would allow us to discuss the policy of term limits, as Ms. Pye mentioned. And number three, to address and possibly take action on something that would address the circumstances generally that apply to this kind of situation where you, and it doesn't hap, you know, this happens, you know, once in a blue moon, where you might have a majority of a commission being termed out if we even kept term limits. But if we are going to keep term limits, where you run into this kind of situation, this was uniquely circumstantial to some conditions of reducing a commission and folding two commissions in together that used to be separate, so forth. But I think Mr. Fellody points out that there's a, you know, we need to have something codified so that if this ever happens again, there's direction on how to, how to do it. So if we could do that, and if that's okay with the council, sounds fine with everybody? Yes, sir.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't mind finding out in the report that comes back next time with the recommendations for actions that we can take. I wouldn't mind finding out if there are any other circumstances like this that are currently foreseeable. And it would probably also be worth, or I would like to know a little bit of the history of it, how we ended up in the situation. It just, I think we're all, we could all agree, it's an odd and less than desirable situation. So I'd like to understand, is it likely to occur anywhere else? What caused it to happen this time? And how do we make sure it doesn't happen again?
Well, I was going to say, what caused it to happen, I think, is, is the very sad is the combination of those two groups. You know, what is it, the law of unintended consequences, where we wanted to have, the council at the time felt that we wanted to get as many people involved in city government as possible.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why we set the six years. I can't remember whether Mayor Brokaw and I voted for it or against it. I don't remember how we did, but the, there was a majority of the council that felt we should, we should have that to get a lot of participation. And it's extremely unusual for, for, I guarantee you, those four people were not appointed. In fact, I would imagine that some of them might have been on more than six years. I don't know if you have or if they have or haven't. But it was a combination of merging those two, I believe.
Yeah. I believe if you went to the original Bicycle Pedestrian Committee and counted those...
Right.
...time, it would be greater than six.
Greater. And that's why we fell into this. All of a sudden, people, when the time we started counting and we said, oh, now there's four, four, four folks.
Yeah. I think the unique situation was created by the fact that this commission was created ...
Right.
...only six years ago.
But anyway, the reason, the answer to your question, the reason we, it was set for six years, it was we wanted, the council at the time felt that we wanted to get more participation. People would serve six years, then we'd get other people to come on. And again, nobody ever intended for four or five all at once to have happen. It should, hopefully, you have staggered terms. And that's what, you know, like I said, the law of unintended consequences, because of the merger, I think that's what happened on this one. So I'm more, I agree with, we should discuss this on, at the next agenda and see where we can come to some adjudication of fairness.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I'd just make one last, just one last comment. Just a thank you to, to Margaret and Jack and Tom for your service. It's, it's a job that a lot of people don't want, even though it's very rewarding. And I just want to publicly thank you for the work that you do for the city, and I hope
Thank you. That brings us to Item 6, which is approval...
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to...
Sorry?
...make a, a report to council that out of the, we had a closed session at the special meeting.
Sure we did.
And there was one action that is required to be disclosed. And I, I did make the announcement at the end of the special meeting, but it's been my practice to announce it at this meeting as well, so the public's informed of those types of decisions. And the council, under a threatened litigation item, made a decision to, if required... The council, under a threatened litigation item, made a decision to, if required, initiate litigation over an issue involving CalPERS interpretation of, and decision regarding the risk pool for public safety employees in San Carlos, that if it's required, you've authorized us to initiate that litigation.
Thank you for reporting on that. Okay. Now, we're done with reports to council, correct? Okay. All right. That brings us to item six, which is approval of the consent calendar. All the items in the consent calendar are, if you will, in a basket, and we approve that basket unless somebody wants to remove something from it. Anybody? I'm not seeing anything, so we can...
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
If you would, just enumerate the items, like A through H, or however.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent calendar, items six A through six H.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, okay. Brokaw?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Brokaw?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to item seven A. But before we get to that, I do, I've got a speaker slip. It says, Agenda Item, San Carlos TV. So, I'm not sure if that's public comment, or...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, San Carlos Transit Village. I see. You know, I just grew up in the era where TVs were really something. Now, it's iPads and everything else, so I get it. All right. It's Transit Village, not TV. Very good. Okay. So, that does bring us to item seven A. This is a public hearing, and it's consideration of a general plan map amendment and zoning district bounding map amendment to allow for the pre-zoning and annexation of sixty and sixty-eight Loma Road.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Stephanie Bertola-Davis, Senior Planner. Tonight, there is a public hearing request in front of you for a pre-zoning and annexation at sixty and sixty-eight Loma Road. Just a brief overview of the annexation process itself. It is a multi-step process. All annexations required to, or requesting to come in to the City of San Carlos require both an amendment to the city's general plan map as well as the zoning district boundary map. The first step was completed in November of 2012. That was review and consideration by the planning commission of both of those entitlements. The planning commission did review and recommend the council approval. The next step, before you tonight, for consideration of those same two requests, following a decision and if an approval is granted, the next step is the property tax exchange between the city and the county of San Mateo, which also will require further action by the council. The last step to solidify an annexation is the actual annexation request with the San Mateo County Local Agency Formation Commission. That's a state-mandated agency countywide that is responsible for changes in district Brief description of the site itself. It's two parcels. They are dashed and outlined here. Parcel A, sixty Loma. Parcel B, sixty-eight Loma. The primary intent of this annexation request is due to a failing septic system at sixty Loma Road, due to the age of that septic system and the existing physical conditions of the sites, very steep and very heavily vegetated, as well as, again, the age of the system, repairs to which have been determined to be very difficult, if not infeasible, as certified with conversations with the San Mateo County Environmental Health Division. Staff has been in contact with agencies, applicable agencies, in the county of San Mateo, and those agencies do support this application. So, the first entitlement request, the general plan map amendment, the sites are proposed to have a general plan land use designation of RS3, which is a single-family low-density. This designation is consistent, excuse me, a single-family low-density at a three-dwelling unit per acre designation. This is consistent with the intent of the city's single-family low-density land use. It's also consistent with the adjacent city parcels immediately to the, to the north of the site. So, the second entitlement request before you tonight is for the zoning district boundary map. That would change the city's boundary limits to include these two parcels. The proposal is to pre-zone these parcels with a zoning designation of RS3, single-family low-density. That's consistent with the general plan designation that I was previously discussing, also, again, consistent with the two immediately adjacent city parcels and as required by the zoning The city's zoning ordinance has a specific chapter that is outlined specifically for criteria for annexation requests. This proposal is found to meet all of those requirements contiguous to a city boundary and to city streets. The ordinance also requires that a fiscal impact analysis be prepared for any kind of annexation to determine any impact, fiscal impact, that the annexation may have to the city. Conclusions of that report did formalize that no additional recurring service costs would occur to the city and that there would actually be, albeit a minor net fiscal benefit from a property tax receipt should the annexation be formalized. The properties do not meet the city's minimum lot area based on slope, which is a criteria in the zoning ordinance. However, neither parcel is requesting any further subdivision or the creation of new lots. And further, that would be solidified through the recordation of a deed restriction that would be recorded against each parcel, which would prohibit any further subdivision in the future. And in summary, the property owners have been in discussion with city's public works department staff, and connection to the city sewer system has been determined to be feasible. So, with that, there is a recommendation that the council consider adoption of a resolution that would amend the general plan map to a land use designation of single-family low-density at three-dwelling units per acre, as well as introduce an ordinance to amend the zoning district boundary map for a pre-zoning designation of RS3, single-family low-density, that would allow for the pre-zoning and annexation at sixty and sixty-eight Loma Road. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions? No? Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Stephanie. I just have a couple of questions, frankly driven by an email, which we were given a copy of this evening. And I just want to clarify something. The writer, the author made mention, made the comment that eighty Loma Road and sixty-eight Loma Road have a common driveway. And I think the gist of the question is the concern over whether or not making a decision about sixty-eight requires action on eighty, or impacts eighty.
Without having any Loma Road, and we do have the property owners here, and perhaps they can specify that, that review of the information submitted for sixty-eight Loma Road showed, did not show any kind of easement for access by eighty Loma Road.
From your, just from your map, do you happen to know which one is eighty? Oh, you don't?
I don't. I'm sorry, I don't. It might be this one? Or is it in the county here?
No, it is actually San Carlos.
It's in San Carlos already.
Okay.
Okay.
I answered that question.
Okay. Yes, it does.
Mr. Black's here. He's going to speak, actually.
That's fine. Thank you.
That was the same question I had, but it's already in San Carlos, so...
Other questions? I just had one, because you mentioned about the lots being undersized for our typical lot size, which is what, five thousand, I guess, or six thousand?
It's based on slope, so the steeper the lot, the bigger, or, excuse me, the steeper the lot, the larger it has to be. These parcels would have been required a two-acre minimum, based on their slope.
All right. So, my question then would be further development as, I take it there's two single-family homes on, or one on each lot right now?
Correct.
So, they would be prohibited or allowed for additions and that sort of thing, adding to their square footage?
They would be allowed to follow the regulations within the proposed pre-zoning of that single-family low-density designation, but further subdivision and new lot creation would be prohibited.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. No other questions?
No.
Okay. It's a public hearing, so we do have a speaker on this, Mr. Bob Black. This Bob Black?
The Bob Black.
The Bob Black.
Good evening, Mayor Brokaw and members of city council. I'm Bob Black, member of, resident of City of San Carlos. I guess the first point on my, that I have, has already been addressed, that it is indeed contiguous. That is strange, though, that I went up and examined the property and eighty and sixty-eight do have a common driveway. And so, I guess I ask, the question is, is sixty-eight, is eighty in the City of San Carlos?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, Bob.
Already. Okay, takes care of that. Staff report considers only one alternative to the septic tank problem and seems primarily interested in supporting the request of the non-resident of San Carlos. And I am a little bothered that we are accepting a property that does not meet our slope density ordinance. Slope density ordinance seems to be one in which we honor more in the breach than in the substance of the ordinance. And this is another, another example of this. It would, I could, this could set a precedent for further requests for annexation of properties adjacent to San Carlos whose septic tanks are failing. Where would you draw the line on this? And unless San Carlos has a clear policy on such annexations, the city council can be accused of favoritism. In this case, the council is requested to grant a favor to a property owner who is not within the City of San Carlos and who, because of the slope of the property, does not meet some of our conditions. I do request that you, as the city council, develop and establish a clear, relevant annexation policy before deciding on this matter. It's something you might do tonight, but I think you must have a general policy that handles these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Okay. I don't see any other speakers on this item, so...
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Very good.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Discussion on the item. Yes, sir?
The one thought that occurred to me is, and it's not actually directly related to how, I will evaluate the particular proposal in front of us, but if it were possible to do so, I wouldn't mind if staff were to spend a little time reviewing whether or not there are other things like this likely to be occurring in that area. Septic systems do fail. It almost sounds to me, from the discussions we've had so far, is that one should almost expect them to fail in this particular situation. And so, whether or not we have to develop a policy about that or not, it would be useful to know, I think, what the longer-term outlook might be, because perhaps there's something where there will eventually need to have to be some upgrades to support connecting additional people to the sewer system. And if so, I'd hate to have to lay the, on the last person to ask us to annex them.
If I may, well, since I've been on the council such a long time, and I think even Bob was on the council, we did exactly this, exactly what Mr. Black was asking for. I remember going through this and looking at annexation policies and reviewing them and making some adjustments. But basically, what it came down to, actually, to speak to Mr. Black's concern about showing favoritism, we dealt with that. That was part of the issue, in a way, was to look at it in terms of public safety. And that, therein lies the issue, really, on a lot of these annexation requests that come forward, is we felt like, as a council at the time, that if we're going to have properties in our influence area, so properties in Devonshire Canyon or up here on Loma Road and areas like that, that are on septic, if that septic fails, that becomes a public safety issue, and it's in our sphere of influence. So, that concerns us. And that's why we developed the policy that if you have a sewer, a septic system failure, we're almost encouraging those property owners to look at annexation to the city if that's their desire. Of course, they don't have to. They can always decide to reinstall a new septic and go that route. But oftentimes, a property owner will look at annexation as their solution to the septic problem. There are other reasons to annex. That's not the only one. But I know that is something that we looked at. Now, to your point, though, I think, you know, we've got a pretty new council in that sense of when people have come on and so forth. It probably wouldn't be a bad idea, I suppose, to have, you know, staff do a presentation at some time on this policy to update the council on, this is what we went through and this is why these kind of things come to you, and so forth, without it being a night that we have an application, just a information item, if you will.
Actually, if I may, I appreciate the historical background. It actually supports what I was thinking. My own personal view of this is it seemed like a neighborly thing to do when somebody's septic system is failing, to try and help them out. I also understand the logic of public safety. I was, perhaps unclear, I was actually raising a somewhat different point, which is if that area within our zone of influence has potential for a number of additional properties that might, say, in the next five or so years, need to be connected to the sewer system, if that's a relatively easy thing to do without having to make infrastructure improvements, fine. I'm really raising the question of, is there potential for, have to make infrastructure improvements, because I would hate to have to tell the last person to ask us, well, we can do it, but you have to spend seventy-five thousand dollars to improve the mainline.
Yeah. If I may here, we can ask the county, but since those are all unincorporated properties, we don't have any data on the existing properties or the condition of their septic tanks or how likely they are to fail. And a lot of it has to do with topography, from what I understand. But we can ask the county if they have that type of information. But, you know, one thing I want to be clear on here is that this is not doing a favor for homeowners. They pay their own way when they come in, and they extend the lateral when they come in, and depending on their proximity to the street and the size of the parcel and where their actual dwelling is located on the parcel, these things can be very, very expensive. In fact, in the seventy-five thousand dollar range, just for you alone. And so, as each one comes in, which is, which is why we have the contiguous requirement in the association to the street and the system, because what's happening is they're extending the system up to their house and their property, so that when the next one comes in, they would extend the system up to the next one, and the next one, and the next one.
No, I see.
So, you're sort of, you're sort of resetting the endpoint as it goes.
All right.
But it can be very expensive, depending on your specific property and how long a lateral you have to build and all those things.
So, if I may, just one other, the contiguous requirement, does that mean, for example, if a property had a septic failure, but it was one property further away, it was not connected to the city? We'd say, well, there may be a public health issue there, but, sorry?
In that instance, and we have done this in the past, we have allowed connections to the sewer system without allowing annexation with the agreement that when the parcel, when and if the parcel became contiguous, that they would annex at that time.
I see.
We don't want to create islands outside the city.
And the cost in that case is still borne by the property owner.
Cost is still borne, and they still pay sewer fees.
All right. No, then you don't need to do any additional research for me. That answers my question.
The last comment, just to add to this discussion a little bit, is I believe, Mr. Savae, this was, you addressed this also in the general plan, annexation policy.
That's right.
Right. Okay. All right.
Just have one more question, Mr. Mayor. Since this area's been unincorporated coming into the city, are there any other costs, like extending sidewalks, putting in streetlights, that sort of thing?
There are no...
There are no costs to the city associated with infrastructure. All the costs of infrastructure would be borne by the applicants. And I'm not completely familiar with this situation, but I don't think the streets up there are wide enough for sidewalks, if I'm not mistaken.
And there's virtually no cost either?
Are there sidewalks there already? Okay. Typically, with these annexations, they're not wide enough, the streets, to support sidewalks. But if they're already in place, and they meet the city's standards, then that's acceptable.
Thank you.
And the same would be true for Public Safety Service, Fire, and Police, because, again, they're in our zone of influence, so we already serve them. All right, we're ready to?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to make a motion that the council approve Resolution Number 2013 dash?
Number three?
Three. Three, Resolution of the City of San Carlos City Council adopting a general plan map amendment for the properties located at 60 and 68 Loma Road, APN 051-472-020, and 051-472-040, to a land use designation of single-family low-density, parentheses, 3 DU per acre, close parentheses.
Second? Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. I'm just curious, at the three?
Me too.
What else have we done?
Two items on the consent calendar.
That's what I was looking, okay.
F and G.
F and G, okay.
Sorry, G and H.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need another vote, don't we? Just one more, Stephanie, or two more?
There's an ordinance.
One more for the ordinance?
We have to introduce an ordinance.
Introduce an ordinance. So I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number?
1453.
1453, in order to the City of San Carlos City Council adopting a zoning district boundary map amendment for the properties located at 60 and 68 Loma Road, APN 051-472-020, and 051-472-040, to allow for pre-zoning of the properties to RS-3, single-family low-density.
Second. We've had a motion and a second, any further discussion? Very good, roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Welcome to San Carlo.
That it?
Almost. All right. Then we go to Item 7B, which is another public hearing, and this is, do you want to introduce this?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. This item is an appeal of the denial of a business registration for Sunflower Massage, a massage establishment at 1482 Laurel Street, San Carlos. The appeal, it comes as an appeal under Municipal Code Section 1.25. The appellant, the business owner, has asked for a continuance of this item. And they've requested a reinspection of their property, which will take place this week, as I understand it. So, under our code, in order to continue this item, the hearing has to be open tonight, and then it can be continued to a date certain, to continue the appeal. And I see that the applicant and her counsel are here to confirm the request for the continuance. But again, we need to open the public hearing, take any public testimony that might be here tonight, and then after that, you can keep the hearing open and continue to the February 11th, 2013 date.
Very good, well, the hearing is open. So, do we have any speakers on this item? I don't have any speaker cards, so. If you could fill one of these out afterwards, that'd be great.
I think I did.
Oh, you did? Oh, maybe I missed it. 7B, oh, I'm sorry, you did. There you go. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Bob Carey, I'm an attorney, I represent Sunflower Massage. What Mr. Rubin said is absolutely correct. We have an inspection of both the fire inspection and a inspection by the building department set for tomorrow. I anticipate that those matters will be completed by the end of this week. In addition, we're requesting that our opportunity to present evidence be continued, in a sense, until the next hearing of the City Council on February 11th. And the reason for that is that I'd like to sit down and discuss with the city staff and with the city attorney the resolution of certain factual matters that are contradicted in our appeal. And that's, I respectfully request your indulgence in that matter, so that we can put together a presentation, and it will be a far different presentation than is in our present appeal, in the sense that certain factual issues will be developed.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And would Lee Yang also like to speak, or?
She would just also, she is here.
Yeah, she filled out a card, so.
And she'd like to request a continuance. I filled out the card for her.
I see, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, it takes a motion to continue the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we continue the public hearing on this matter until our February 11th, 2013 meeting.
I'll second that. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, and that brings us to Item C, which is consideration of a recommendation of the Planning Commission to certify the EIR on San Carlos Transit Village, or SCTV, that threw me off.
Good evening, honourable mayor, members of the City Council. At the December 10th City Council meeting, the City Council in public received presentations from a number of different experts who worked on the environmental impact report. And there are a number of these experts here this evening, if the council needs clarification on any of the issues. Now that the council has heard from and asked questions of the experts, the next step would be to conduct a public hearing, and eventually consider a motion on whether or not to certify the final environmental impact report. The city may also consider giving project direction and the applicant direction on the proposed project as part of the improvement measures, which would further guide the project if it moves into the second phase, which is the entitlement phase. Certification of the EIR is done by a resolution, and I'll get to that in just a minute. But in terms of tonight's meeting, tonight, as I noted, you've heard from the experts, so the next step would be to conduct a public hearing, and then, as I noted, consideration of the final document and the improvement measures. Certification of the EIR is done by a resolution, which is a written statement adopted by the City Council. And as the council's recommending body regarding SEQA, the Planning Commission has recommended adoption of the resolution, which includes findings and conclusions on the adequacy of the final environmental document. This document is the city's document. Certification of the EIR is a statement that the document has adequately studied the potential environmental impacts of the project. Certification of the EIR also refers to the documents that constitutes the final environmental document. That would be the draft EIR, and all the appendices in that document, the responses to comments document, the errata, which staff has prepared, and Table S2, which is the mitigation measures that have been corrected. Additional improvement measures, as I have mentioned, have been recommended by the Planning Commission. And this is, again, for Phase 2, if the project goes forward in Phase 2, these are intended to be conditions of project approval for the project to be considered. And they're not intended to be SEQA mitigations, however. The City Council can confirm or modify those improvement measures, and any guidance on them would be helpful for the Planning Commission and the applicant as the project moves forward in the process, if it does.
May I interrupt you for just a second there?
Sure.
I just want to get a clarification. When you said the recommendations are not SEQA documents, can you dig into that a little bit, what is meant by that?
These improvement measures were included outside of the SEQA process. In SEQA, in the EIR, you have mitigation measures, which are in state code for the California Environmental Quality Act. And those mitigation measures are supposed to reduce any environmental impacts to a level of insignificance. So that's the SEQA part. Those are the mitigation measures, you would be considering those. However, the Planning Commission felt that there were a number of issues that were important to their consideration of the EIR, but they were outside of the SEQA process. And they wanted, they felt like if this goes forward, then we want the applicant, we want the City Council, we want the public to know that these are some issues we think is important moving forward. So it's really a separate document called improvement measures for future consideration. And that's what, you shown up here on the screen, they're included in your packet.
So those would be taken up when the project goes through entitlement?
That's right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Should have been listening. Were you saying we're not going to be talking about these tonight? We'll do it at entitlement?
You can talk about these, that is.
I understood that it carries through, that's why I was confused.
Yes, you can talk about them tonight, you can add to them, you can modify them, and it's guidance for the future.
Okay.
So these improvement measures are just guidance for Phase 2.
Okay, so, well, okay, I apologize. So if there's no comment on any of these, are they etched in stone if we vote for the EIR tonight?
No, because nothing's been approved, so they're still.
So there's another bite of the apple could be taken?
Oh, yes, yeah.
What you're driving at, is what I was driving at, is that I wanted to understand that since they're separate from SEQA, they would move forward as recommendations, but as you, to use your term, they're not etched in stone, because they will simply be taken up in the next phase.
The next phase, okay, fine, thank you.
That's right.
Sorry, Mr. Seve, thank you.
No problem. So in closing, if the City Council reaches the point in this meeting where it's ready to consider a motion, staff will be prepared to present the motion, this language on the screen. And the City Council could consider a motion expressing your interest in changes to the project, or incorporation of additional measures, those improvement measures, as recommended by the Planning Commission. So you could do the SEQA document, and you can refer back to these improvement measures. So this motion is represented in the slide, and any new specific interests of the council could be added to this motion. And if you're ready this evening, we'll go back and we'll provide you with this language up on the screen. Again, that concludes the staff report. Staff is available to answer any questions, as are the consultants that were, or their representatives that were here at the last meeting. That concludes the staff report.
Questions for staff?
No.
You, Mr. Olbert?
Just a point of clarification in terms of process. Since at our previous meeting, there were a number of questions that, I know I at least didn't ask, when is the appropriate time for me to be asking them, of staff and the presenters?
I hadn't thought about that. I did want to get through all the public comment tonight, so I'm inclined to go to that first, and then come back to very in-depth questions. Do you have a few that are maybe more, I have one that's kind of general to the process, I think.
I didn't really structure mine that way. There's some generals, some are not, so I'm happy to wait till after the public comment.
Okay. There is one that I do have, and I just want to know how to, how to address it, how to deal with it, and perhaps, according to your answer, not at all. But if you remember, on Wheeler Plaza, I voted no on the environmental impact report. And my reason was because it ignored the traffic impacts we have already on Holly Street, except to say, well, we'll put money aside in a fund to mitigate traffic in the future. And my reasoning for voting against it was, we're only going to have a further impacted traffic issue in the future, and yet, to what we already have. And what we already have is, in my estimation, an unacceptable condition. So what's the point of putting money aside and saying we're going to deal with this in the future? And sort of kick the can down the road. And the other thing I heard on that project was, we're not required with the EIR to really consider Holly Street, which it didn't. It just looked at intersections in and around the downtown, and traffic around the project. And I asked the question, how far do we throw the net? And again, the answer I got was, we're not required to go that far. So my question now is, even though we're not required to go that far, could we make, if we wanted to, as a council, could we make a decision, we want to go that far? Or is that not, would that be disallowed somehow by, would that be an infringement of property rights, or whatever?
I believe that Holly Street traffic was considered as part of this EIR traffic study. And what I would suggest is that if you have specific concerns about Holly Street traffic and intersections around there, that you ask that question of the transportation engineer. And I can go into more detail with regard to your discussion, but if I answered your question.
Yeah, you did, so when we get to asking staff?
Through the mayor, if I may just add to Mr. Seve's comments, there's a nexus issue, though. You can't just extend the traffic study to the entire city.
Well, I'm not trying to.
Right, you're going to have to have a nexus to the project.
I'm looking at Holly itself, not the entire city, but just Holly. Yeah, okay. All right, tonight, we did want to have the public hearing. And I just want folks to know, running this meeting, that, I've only got a few speaker cards, quite frankly, so it's not that many. And I know there was one person in particular that had a, I think, a PowerPoint presentation that they wanted to give to us. So I'm saying this to the council, my feeling on this is, we already spent one meeting where we started at 5:00, and we didn't get out of here till 11:30, where we heard the city staff and the applicant. So I'm inclined to be a little bit liberal. Most of these comment cards are from the, in fact, I think they're all from, well, maybe one or two or not, but they're from the Greater East Side community, which does act somewhat as an organization. So I'm inclined to be a little bit liberal with the time, and let them present what their issues are, given how much time we already spent with the applicant, and if that's fine by council. I don't want this meeting running till, you know, 2:00 in the morning, by any means, but again, we only have five speaker cards, maybe it looks like six. Is that fine with council?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have no objection to giving them discretion.
Understood, okay. All right. Well, that's the, that's the way we're going to do it, then. I'll be liberal with you on your comments. If you're repeating what somebody else said, I'm going to ask you to close it up, and we'll go with that. And I, like I said, the fellow that has the PowerPoint, since he went to all the trouble to put that together, I want to give him a chance to show it to us. Plus, it'll, for me, and I think the rest of the council members, it'll answer a lot of questions, since this is a lot of material to dig into, and you guys obviously dug into it. All right. Should we, do you intend to start first?
I am the guy with the PowerPoint, so.
Yeah, I know that, but.
He hasn't called you yet.
Yeah, we have a lot of speakers, I'm just, but if you, you know, you guys know what you're doing with the East Side group, if that's fine. If you want to present first, that's fine. I do have a, before we do that, I tell you what. There's one speaker card that's from a different organization, the Sierra Club, and that's Bonnie, so I want to give her a chance to come up first and speak. And why don't we go with David Crabbe next? Because he's also not with the East Side, and then we can get the rest after that. Unless David doesn't want to do that. Very good, okay. That'll be fine. All right. Bonnie?
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos resident, but I'm speaking for the Sierra Club, Sustainable Land Use Committee, and the Loma created chapter. We urge the City Council to certify the final environmental import, impact report for San Carlos Transit Village, but we also urge you Carlos Transit Village, but we also urge you as well to approve the table of improvement measures for the entitlement stage for this project. We, as you know, don't go around endorsing things without knowing what the project's going to look like, but we do, at this stage, we urge you to proceed and get it on the road. We have a letter that we sent you on December 5th that outlines a lot of improvements we'd like to see when it comes to the project stage. The improvement measures have included some of our, but we have others. And just briefly, two things that are quite important, and one is that the 15% below market rate requirement for the units be reinstated, because they were promised two years ago when this project came before in the preliminary EIR. And in the entitlement stage, we feel it's very important, because that's an ideal place for low-cost housing and moderate housing. And it's transit-oriented. These people usually have maybe one car, not three. And they can take transit. And that's, that's a very logical place. And if you go with an end loop fee, charging the developer 15, you know, what it would equal building 15 units someplace else, or 40 units someplace else, you may never spend that money, because you may not have the land to build it on. And the Cherry Street land that you're anticipating perhaps fine, you've got some of the Wheeler Plaza BMR units already spoken for for that, so there wouldn't be enough space there. So I really urge you to, to consider requiring 15% of the units be for the below moderate, you know, real low-cost, moderate housing. There's a scale that's on the city housing element that you should be following. And then the other thing is that one of the improvements we asked for was unbundled parking. Again, because if you sell an apartment, I mean, rent an apartment for X amount of dollars, and it includes a parking space, and you don't have a car, that's not really fair. And some guy may have two cars. And so if you just rent the living space and then charge for the parking space separate, it makes a lot more sense, particularly at this location where we hope the people will be using transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crabbe wanted to wait. And where's Dimitri? There he is. Let's see. Here, let's go that way.
See if I can find the... So this has been a very long process.
Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, it's Dimitri Vandilis. I'm Communications Director and South of Holly Rep for the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association. And this, this project and our involvement with it has, has been a pretty long journey. And one point that I'd like to make is, you know, we've been at this for a long time, and we know the, these issues inside and out. And we've tried very hard to create a dialogue with the developer and with Sam Trans over the years. And it's, it's been tough, it's been a tough road. It's been tough sledding. Can you hear me?
I've got some people in the audience doing this.
Oh, okay. So, and one point I want to make is, you know, the city made a good effort at the last meeting to send out letters to the community, and we had a large turnout. Unfortunately, no one was able to talk. And we've all been so busy, we didn't try to get folks to show up to this meeting. So the one thing I'd ask the city council to consider is that the lack of a sea of red shirts here isn't due to a lack of involvement or commitment on the part of the community. It's just that it's a game of attrition. It's very hard for people to come, meeting after meeting after meeting. This is maybe our eighth or 10th or 12th meeting that we've attended, and we've had quite, quite a large number of residents show. So let's see. How do I just get this guy to move?
I'm on the arrow.
I'm clicking on it to make a note. Okay, great. So at the, at the previous presentation, I was taking notes in real time. I don't want to spend too much, too much effort here. That, you know, that right of way, the Caltrain and Sam Trans owns is something that they own in trust for the, for the people, for the county. So they are developing quite a few properties. And in my, in my written feedback to the council, I believe I listed a number of them. The Sam Trans representative was claiming that there are only two, but there are significantly more of these developments along the rail corridor. I bring that up because this is, this is, you know, a regional effort that the Sam Trans is putting together to develop their properties. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to spend too much time. In the six and a half hours, a couple of things popped in my mind. When they showed visual representations, the cars weren't to scale with the buildings, so the cars would have been, you know, humongous cars next to these smaller buildings. You have to look at those, at the diagrams that are showed by the artist representations with a little bit of a grain of salt, as in some of the feedback that the, that the experts were providing. I just bring that up because it's a subtle thing. It's a subconscious thing that you may not notice, and you might think that the scale of these buildings isn't that big, but it's pretty big. So let's just keep moving here. A couple of other quick questions. You know, the study did not include impacts of the multimodal station. We, it, when, when the request for proposals came out, this, the multimodal station and the Transit Village were all part of one big package, and now they've been split into two separate projects. And you can't, you can't really analyze the impacts to San Carlos and to our, our community in particular, without looking at those, those projects in conjunction. And I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit further. A couple of other real quick things is, I noticed that there was no discussion of improvements at Holly and El Camino. And that's where four out of the six, two-thirds, if not more, of the residential units are going to be on the north side of Holly Street. So, so crossing at El Camino and Holly for these, for these folks who are supposedly going to be taking the train instead of driving, I think it's critical for us to consider improvements to that intersection, because that's, I don't know if anyone's ever tried to cross the street there. It's, it's quite difficult and dangerous. So, you know, in our view, the EIR just ignored our neighborhood and community impacts, Old County Road impacts, our scenic views, environmental hazards, traffic and parking from the project and the multimodal station, the noise from the train operations and the bounce back from the buildings. We heard lots of comments that the sound expert was saying, well, there's never been a 2 dB increase in noise bounce back. What was missing from that is, sound is, is a logarithmic curve, and as you go up, the numbers increase exponentially. So a 2 dB increase from three to five is barely perceptible to the ear, whereas when you get into the 80s and 90s, it's very, very significant. And if you look at a chart, you'll see it's, it's stuff like that. Think about the Richter scale. An 8.0 earthquake is very different than a nine, or an 8.5 is very different from an 8.7. So as you go, as those numbers get higher, the small, small increments are way greater. And the noise at the station was in the 80s, 80 dB. So the difference between 80 and 82, or 82 and 84, is a heck of a lot more than 40 to 42, or 40 to 50 even. The electrification and high-speed rail, which we consider foreseeable projects, were really pretty much ignored. There was some discussion about the four-track system. I went to the, the recent Caltrain meeting where they talked about the blended, the blended study. And a couple of things that I think are really important to consider in thinking about this project are that three out of the five options for passing tracks, passing tracks could conceivably be four-track period systems or three-track non-period systems. Three out of the five all went through San Carlos. So we're talking about a 60%. The odds are 60% that if, if, that the blended system needs additional, if HSR is going to need more than two, two trains per hour, the odds are 60% that it's going to come through our community. So that's something to consider. It's, it's, you know, I just want to make sure our eyes are open as a community regarding that. And at that study, they, they mentioned that there were two other options, one more on the south side of the peninsula and on the north, northern section. But they said that the middle options were the ones that had better performance. So, because, you know, as you're trying to get trains to pass, it's easier somehow when it's more in the middle of the span. So, you know, I think in considering this project and considering the cumulative impacts, we need to have our eyes wide open regarding the fact that our berm, which we went through considerable expense and inconvenience to have constructed, may be forced to come down. And there's, there's no way we can, we can tell. If that berm comes down and, and the project is built, we're going to have some pretty tough issues. It's going to be very difficult to keep Old County Road open, if not impossible. And the impacts to the, to the community are going to be great. So I just, I just ask that the council consider asking, asking those questions and trying to get as much clarity as possible. We can't predict the future, so we don't really know. But in our discussions with Sam Trans, they have taken the tack that, oh, that's way off in the future, and, you know, it'll never happen at this meeting. You know, they have a MOU between the Joint Powers Board and the High-Speed Rail Authority, where they're discussing that. They have, they're talking about, exploring ways to accelerate early investment, project delivery, and to clear the early investment in blended system improvements into one environmental document. So they're, so they're making plans for, for HSR while sort of denying that it's really happening. And they have to. I mean, you know, it's, I can't predict the future. I don't know if we're going to have an HSR system, but it's, it's, it's something that must be considered. One thing in the EIR that I do take some exception to in, in the characterization that city staff has presented is that the principles of the East Side specific plan and the San Carlos General Plan and Resolution 2003-79 were not used as metrics to measure impacts, community impacts. So, and I feel that that's a pretty big omission, that that was something that could have been used as a guideline to say, hey, yeah, this fits within the community, this project fits within the community, or it doesn't. And, and I do ask the council to think about what our general plans, what our plans for the city are, and whether or not due diligence was done in using, in, in the arguments that were made in the EIR stating that there were no significant impacts. Let's move on. So speaking, speaking of that, these were all drawings that, that were taken of the project, and this is the project that is being considered. And then you can kind of see the scale here of a person. Several years ago, at the first planning commission meeting by the draft EIR, I made a joke that that person is, will be, would be the last person living in the San Carlos neighborhood, once the buildings are built. But you can get, you can just basically get a feel for the scale of the buildings, the fact that this area is a bit higher than where our neighborhood is. And again, without really knowing what's going to happen with this berm, Sam Trans has stated that there is room, technically room. They have never talked about staging, but they, but they've talked about physical room, that there were early studies that, you know, they could do four tracks. But that's going to push the trains much closer to these buildings. And I, you know, I'm not going to doubt the veracity of those statements, but what's missing there is where do you put a shoe fly track if you need it, if you, if you need to keep the train running? Where is construction going to occur for HSR if this berm needs to come down? Or electrification? So we're going to have impacts, and part of those impacts are due to, to the project itself. Let's, let's block. Oh, interesting. It's trying to go to our, to our website. So if you look at the dotted line there, that's the height of the train platform. And you can see, you know, so a train's going to be up here, and the sound guy was talking about how there's really no impact unless one wall is higher than the other. And what I ask the city council to consider here is, is you can see that the height of the train is significantly lower than these buildings. And, and that noise, even though it may only be 2 dB, although the studies weren't, weren't made, is, there will be an impact. It's, it's hard to say that there won't be an impact. But the point I'm making is, is when you look at those drawings that were presented by the, by the consultants, they weren't showing this, right? And this is, this is kind of a stark, I didn't make these up. These were, these were from the, from their plans. So this is the eastern elevation. Ah, sorry. There we go again. This is the southernmost retail building. This is where the, the platform is currently, and you can see that, again, it's significantly higher. These are only, this is currently planned as a three-story building. But you can see that actually the, the height of these buildings is just about as high as the residential buildings. So we have to be careful about three stories versus four stories and actually think about the height. I tend to measure the height of the building from the top of the roof, but that's just me, because I'm a simple person. The, the plans are, actually show the roof midpoint, so there's some discrepancies. I believe, I believe the roof midpoint amongst, for many of the buildings are in the high 40s. So there's some, there's, there have been some discrepancies in terms of who says how high the buildings are. These are the views that we have. I'm just going to run through these really quickly. These are the views that theoretically are not being impacted at all by the 50-foot buildings. One thing that never was mentioned is, is a public area here, the station itself, the buildings are going to knock out all these views as well, which I think is a bummer. They talked about the shadow studies. I, you know, I was kind of encouraged by the, the shadow study and sort of amazed, because some of those trees, when they did the simulation, I've never seen a tree provide as much shade as, as that study did. But if you, you know, I'm not sure that, that, if you guys feel that due diligence was done in the shadow studies, then that's great. I'm not sure. The multimodal station impacts, this is very worrisome to me, because there's a lot of discussion about the project and the folks that are living there, but there has been no discussion about the fact that the multimodal station and the parking lot is being moved significantly further south from the train platform itself. And the issue there is that we're very concerned about how our, how our neighborhood is going to be impacted. So in my early calculations, we're actually getting a reduction in parking spaces by over 20%. The hope is that more people will be riding this new electrified system, so that's worrisome. School kids taking the bus. My daughter takes the bus and gets let off and, you know, right, right by the underpass so she can walk straight, straight home. I'm concerned about the... the underpass so she can walk straight, straight home. I'm concerned about the new station letting kids off in different areas and walking along there. So, to illustrate the point is, in our neighborhood, south of Holly Street, midway on the first block between Old County Road and, I'm forgetting what that next street is, Bayport, it's just a tenth of a mile from any of the streets. It's actually shorter in many of the locations. It's one-tenth of a mile from our neighborhood in the first block to the platform. And if you go to the second block of our neighborhood, which is from Bayport all the way down to Industrial, it's two-tenths of a mile. The closest spots in the new lot, the closest spots, the vast majority of those spots in the new lot are going to be significantly further, but the closest, and there are just a few, are, again, two-tenths from the platform. So, someone can park at, on my block, all the way at Industrial and be closer to the platform than the new parking lot. That's a concern. The reason that's a concern is folks can get free parking in our neighborhood. And I'd like to see Samtrans bring something to the table and offer free parking to commuters in this, you know, if this project gets approved. I think that would be beneficial to the city to have free parking in that lot, and it could incentivize folks to actually use the parking lot for its intended purpose. You'll see that the Transit Village Apartments are about a third of a mile. That's about as far as Town Restaurant is to the platform, so folks can get an idea. The Olive Street, Caltrain Parking Lot to the platform, that's the middle of the new lot, is a little over a third of a mile. City Hall to the platform, where we are now, is the same distance. For needs, nothing. That's a trivial walk. But for commuter or someone who's just spent 20 minutes driving from the hills down and then has to walk a third of a mile, that may cause them to just decide not to take public transit, which is not what we want. The front doors of the library to the platform, .42, and the further, furthermost parking is the same distance, the Arroyo Street and Caltrain Parking Lot. Those are measurements I did in Google Maps years ago. Here, traffic and driveways. Now, I heard, and one of the city council members made a very astute remark regarding how can traffic be reduced by 20%? I forget who it was, but it's baffles the mind that we'll have 280 apartment buildings plus all of this new commercial stuff, and the parking will somehow be magically reduced 20%. But that point was made clear. It theoretically is less if it's a well-designed transit-oriented development. But you can see, there's a heck of a lot of driveways. Each of these lines here are driveways. And here's San Carlos Avenue. We're going to have people hitting, you know, lefts, going straight, doing U-turns, two driveways on one side of San Carlos, two driveways on the other side, like cherry, another two driveways north of Holly Street, U-turns, right turns, left turns, cutting across Holly Street. There was no discussion of improving this critical crossing, given that most of the residents are going to be up here. They're going to have to walk across here and get all the way to the train station. So, I ask that we consider that, that we look at ways of, this project should clearly be figuring out how to improve this intersection. If anyone has not tried to walk across there, give it a shot. It's not fun. We've been very consistent from the beginning in trying to figure out ways to make this project something that would work for San Carlos as a whole, for our community. And for a really, really long time is, and Ben Fuller stated this many years ago, is how do you develop the area in a way that's a win on both sides? Back in 2006, it's very different, say, than how the Palo Alto Medical Foundation has done things. They've come to us and listened to our concerns. There's been no outreach from Samtrans in the last two to three years. That's back in 2006. That has changed very recently, and there have been discussions. But we're left with a plan that's, the onus of making the improvements really lies with the planning commission and city council because we didn't have a good back and forth. We didn't have a spirit of cooperation and dialogue in trying to figure out how to make this a project that works for the community. So, it's a rush job to try to get there. I mentioned electrification and HSR. You can read those bullet points. In terms of mitigations, you know, everything is mitigated by reducing the size and scope of the project. We're deeply concerned about Old County Road. I'm not going to get into those details. They're pretty obvious. We'd like to see shuttles moved to the new multimodal station if we're making improvements and we're saying, hey, this is a great, great thing, this new multimodal station. We'd like the shuttles from the east side moved there since traffic is going to be so much better and reduced magically. You know, we've talked about increasing the landscaping and trees, reducing the height of the buildings. These are some ideas for mitigations that we have been actually amazingly consistent over the years. We'd like to make sure that the electrification project, that there is some review so we understand what the impacts to landscaping and what the impacts to, visual impacts are as regards the electrification system. There are going to be these big transformers to power these electrified trains. There are going to be catenary lines, and I'd like to make sure that we understand what that system is going to look like. And, you know, I'd like to see Samtrans come to the, bring something to the community. And, you know, one idea is to make free parking for commuters using the lot. I mentioned the crosswalk improvements, noise reduction measures for the train, a quiet zone. These are things that we've talked about for years and years and years. Park funds for L'Oreola Park expansion, getting the developer and Samtrans to pitch in. Samtrans, I was, you know, a little incredulous that the Samtrans representative was, you know, kind of poo-pooing the idea of a million bucks a year that they were making. And then you multiply that by the number of projects that they're considering. This is a, you know, a fairly significant income stream for them. Let's keep going. I don't want to get too technical and wonky about the sound study measurements, but in my draft EIR feedback and in my final EIR feedback, I did ask for specific measurements of trains entering and exiting the platform, and that just wasn't done. And the rationale for that was, it's not going to be more than a 3 dB increase. Of course, that ignored the logarithmic curve, and we're already over allowable limits. My draft EIR feedback, there was, they basically said, well, we don't need to consider that because it's HSR, it's an HSR study, but the study actually was the Federal Transportation Authority, and on its cover was a picture of Caltrain. So, there were, you know, there's some issues with these studies. No train horn noise was measured. That was worrisome. The impacts on the metal station. And as I mentioned earlier, it's this lack of consistency regarding the general plan guidelines and not referencing them in the EIR. The RFP document clearly states the project is supposed to take into consideration the land use policies and design guidelines from the city. So, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about impartiality of the city staff. This project is part of the Grand Boulevard Initiative, and I feel that I'm concerned that there's more advocacy for the project than is being publicly stated. And it's really up to this process from the planning commission and city council to look past what we consider emissions in the EIR documents. And if you decide to approve the EIR to, in the entitlements phase, to really look at these issues and consider community impacts because the EIR did not. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Mr. Mayor, the chair.
Yes.
Is it possible to get a copy of this?
You have it here, and--
I don't have it anywhere, but I'll be happy to send it.
Not on your dime, if you maybe can somehow, you have it?
We have it.
I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you, Dimitri.
Yeah, no problem. I'm happy to send it or any other--
And also, I'm hoping you guys did read the written feedback because it did provide a context for what's been going on for the past few years. So, how do I quit this? Yeah, how do I exit this? Escape from, oh, I see. There.
Okay, our next speaker is Ben Fuller.
Good evening, everybody. And thank you for hearing our thoughts. As mentioned, unfortunately, we had a, all the paid, highly incentivized consultants had to earn their check at the last meeting, and that was when we were able to generate the people. And it is a war of attrition, as Dimitri said. And with that said, I still have some hope because I feel like we have very thoughtful council members and planning commissioners who have been listening, and we appreciate it, well-informed and really asking good questions. So, I'm going to keep it a little short, and I'm going to try to put this in context. What has been requested is 281 units on the San Carlos Transit Village-appointed land that's coming from Samtrans and the Joint Powers Board. And it's a very complicated story about whose land it is and whether there should be railroad tracks running there in the future, and whether we should save this land for right of way or not. With that said, you know, progress must continue, and something probably is going to get built there. And right now, we're looking at this project. And we'll put it in the context of what exists now in San Carlos history. So, I know that Ron, for example, played baseball, and I know that Mark often spent time over in greater east San Carlos as a younger man, and many of you as well have been over there quite a bit. And in case you didn't know, there's 500 homes in greater east San Carlos, actually, maybe 502. And whether that includes the apartments at the end of Old County Road next to Bakers, I'm not sure, but I know that there's 491 standing homes. And we're talking about 281 units. So, what I want to try to make sure is that the city council considers, you know, each home's probably worth half a million bucks, maybe 600,000 or 700,000 bucks. And if you add 500 together, that's 350 million bucks worth of homes, you know, conservatively. It's a lot, there's a lot of homes already there. And now we have this structure coming in, and we've seen through what Dimitri represented that a lot of things are going to be impacted. You've got Old County Road, you've got views, you've got the noise issue, you've got the parking issue, and you've got a much larger sort of regional issue, I guess we could call it the Grand Boulevard Initiative. We all know that this is sort of the linchpin. If this gets built, you guys are essentially starting a cascade, a domino effect of these, what they call stack and pack apartments, all up and down El Camino. You guys are the sort of like, you guys kick off the stack and pack parade, okay? And so, really, the question is, what this building is going to, what kind of impact is this building going to have on the future of all of El Camino? Now, there's a couple of ways to look at that. One way to look at it is that, let's build something that fits this neighborhood, and maybe that'll then happen in the nine other places where, even though Mark Simon wasn't willing to admit it, that million bucks a year sort of amalgamates. You get a million bucks a year from nine different parcels, nine million bucks a year that helps us run our train. And we do want to find ways to run the train, and we think that, you know, they're being creative and trying to generate some revenue. What we're concerned about is the scale at which they're doing this. And so, really, our major issue, and it comes down to a document that you're going to be looking at tonight, the final environmental impact report. And the finding in that final environmental impact report, I'll repeat, is that there are no significant adverse impacts of this project. This project is, it's basically not going to impact anything, is what our illustrious paid consultants with the sort of blessing of the city staff confirmed. This building is just going to not have any impact, and it's going to be great, and no one's going to be impacted. That was the finding. Now, what happened was a really weird thing, and I think, Mark, you were there, you saw this. The planning commission actually just punted. They spent a whole bunch of time massaging and nuancing the language around what they were going to approve for the final environmental impact report. Well, we're not really saying that we agree with the findings, right, head lawyer? And then Greg had to say, no, 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 you're not saying that you agree with the exact language. You're just agreeing that this thing can now go to the city council, but you're not saying you agree with the findings of the final environmental impact report. Because you're saying, well, if we did, we wouldn't agree with it. And so, now you guys are in the same situation. This has been punted further and further down the road, and we could have been talking with Samtrans and Legacy for all these years, but they didn't really want to work with us until now. And we are starting to make progress. I'm not going to lie. It's not like a complete disaster. But the point is, this thing is still too big, and there are significant adverse impacts. Yet, for some reason, and Al had to do it again, you heard, I mean, Matt, you brought up the point, well, wait a second, are these part of the SEQA process or not? And it's all been done very carefully. They don't want there to be significant adverse impacts in the SEQA process because that then means you've got to mitigate. And they don't want to be required to mitigate. And so, they're pushing everything outside of the SEQA process, essentially turning five city council members into grand experts about how to mitigate this thing. Now, you guys have the full responsibility of mitigation because nobody else wanted to do it. The planning commission, they did all these mitigations outside of SEQA because, again, no one wants to admit the massive, massive adverse impact of the project as it currently stands. So, we know you guys are really thoughtful. I've spoken with each of you. I've been very impressed with your knowledge on this issue. What we're really now asking for, because no one else is willing to do it, is it looks like it's up to you guys to try to mitigate however the impacts are seen, whether they're significantly adverse, whether they're outside of the process, to mitigate these impacts. We really appreciate you guys spending your time for all these years now on this project, and it's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Hilburn, resident of San Carlos. Thank you, city council, Mayor Gorkot, for hearing us tonight. I only have one page. So, and I was the guy that wrote SCTV. Didn't mean to fool you there. So--
I'll talk to you about that later.
Yeah. Next time, I'll write it out. I'm a school teacher, so I should do that. But I'll lead by example. Before I go into the page and basically, you know, what I'm going to talk about, I do want to echo the sentiments of both Ben and Dimitri without going into it ad nauseam. But, you know, there was a notice sent out about a public hearing, and you saw the people that were here at the last public hearing. None of them got to speak, and there was no other notice sent out. So, I would ask that you take that into consideration. There are a lot of people that aren't here that really, you know, did want to speak, and it is a matter of attrition, unfortunately, and everybody's busy. So, if you would take that into consideration. Tonight, what I would like to go over, basically, I want to address the final EIR master response number two, which has to do with visual quality. It kind of skips over into density as well. And one thing, I just, I want us to understand here because I've heard people kind of asking questions, well, you know, these land use policies, can they be separate from SEQA? Are they with SEQA? If you look at the law, even under SEQA, the city has to follow the guidelines, and SEQA has to follow whatever city guidelines there are as well. For example, we have land use policies, we have general plans, those kinds of things. And it's really important that those are followed in the final EIR. And you, as a city council, have the power to do that. So, I just, I want to make that clear. I want to make that clear. So anyways, going into the SEQA significant thresholds, one thing they talk about in the final master response, it says, "This section thus describes the consistency of the proposed project with the policies of the general plan, the San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18 zoning, Resolution 2003-79, and the city's downtown urban design guidelines adopted for the purpose of avoiding or mitigating significant environmental impacts. The decision-making body of the jurisdiction will ultimately determine the proposed project consistency with the entire general plan and other city planning goals." We need to understand that that is written underneath SEQA. That was in the final EIR. So it's very important to understand that. Now, you could do that in the entitlement process, but that's not really the place to do that. The final EIR is really looking at the true impacts of what this is. I want to just look at policy... Land Use Policy 8-11. It says, "To discourage abrupt changes in the building scale. A gradual transition between low-rise to mid-rise buildings should be achieved by using low-rise buildings at the edge of the project site. Consider the relationship of the buildings to the street, to one another, and to adjacent structures and land uses, especially single-family residential." You saw some of the images that Dimitri had up there. This FEIR, the final EIR, says that there's a less than significant impact, and we just absolutely don't agree with that. And this is straight from the land use policy from the city. So we really need to take that into consideration and the effect that it has. The revised massing alternative, which the master response always goes back to, the revised massing alternative in the final EIR. It reduces amassing on the eastern facade of the buildings facing Old County Road from four stories under the proposed project to two to three stories to provide gradual transition between the lower-density uses to the east and the revised massing alternative. So that is their statement that they're saying there. Looking at Figure 3-7B, which is in the final EIR, "The massing of the proposed project reduced intensity alternative and revised massing alternative viewed from the east with approximate heights..." I have this in quotes, "The majority of buildings along Old County Road are between 30 and 40 feet still. There's only one 20-foot building." So if you go back, and I'm going to ask that you do this as a city council, really go back and look at Figure 3-7B because that's what they're consistently going back to, saying, "Oh, this is why... This is how we've mitigated the impact." And there's really no change whatsoever. There's a quote on the ABAG website, Association of Bay Area Governments, and they employ a website called Focus. You may have heard of it. "It emphasizes the need for focus growth as well as the conservation of natural resources. In particular, Focus encourages development of complete communities, neighborhoods with housing, jobs, shopping, parks, schools, and other services near transit services as a way to increase the range of housing and transportation choices in the region." And this is part of the Bay Area Initiative. Why, then, is this transit-oriented development, San Carlos Transit Village, built so close to the railroad tracks that, according to the EIR sound expert who was here, addressing both planning commission and the city council, "We'll have to keep all windows and doors closed because of sound, in turn creating a transit-oriented development that will be running heating, ventilation, air conditioning units 24/7." Is this really the true goal of ABAG and Focus? Is this really the kind of development that you want to push forward? It doesn't really relate well to what the whole focus is for the Grand Boulevard Initiative and for having buildings that are truly environmentally friendly. And my question to the Sierra Club, too, if they really realize this and know this too, because these are not very environmentally friendly buildings. I am just asking that you lower the height, lower the density. It's going to take care of traffic. It's going to take care of massing. It's going to take care of all these things that are going to affect the whole city, not just East San Carlos. So thank you for your time, and please consider sending this back to the developer for some rethought. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Paul Maginetti.
I live on Springfield Drive in San Carlos, and I'm on the board of GESE. I want to paraphrase this, make it a little easier. At the end of the last meeting two weeks ago, I would summarize my feelings as sad and frustrated. And I want to explain why. One of the instructions that you got from city staff was that, in a case where experts disagree, to go ahead and decide that there is no significant impact. As if, to use a baseball reference again, the tie base goes to the runner. But it can make a difference. For example, one expert for hazardous waste stated that xylene was not a carcinogen. I went online, and it's not quite that simple. So if you were to decide to agree with the city representative that it wasn't, you could be putting the community at risk. Another issue I have is the way it's... The conclusions are presented. When they were talking about traffic impacts, it was presented as having 20% less traffic. I'm not exactly sure on the number, but what they really meant was, it's 20% less than it could be. Kind of like putting a slab of butter on the table and say, "Well, this is low-fat butter." It's still going to have a big impact. And the other issue is, and they called them improvements, not mitigations, that they could reach out to other projects. For example, the multimodal station as perhaps improving an issue with parking. Or the Grand Boulevard planned to route traffic down Walnut and then Holly as a way to improve traffic, not mitigate it, but improve it. I found those characterizations troubling. I think we can all remember in grammar school, we'd get a sudden spot quiz, and we'd all have to take the quiz. And at the end, the class would grade the quiz. You would turn to the person behind you, you would hand your quiz to them. I'm looking to you guys as the desk behind the staff to take a look at this with the prudent judgment and critical thinking that I know you're capable of as you decide these things. That being said, there's one thing that I do need to state for the record. For years, we have been treated not as stakeholders, as if we don't have our concerns addressed. There's a problem to be handled. I requested documents under the California Public Records Act because we were getting no information, only silence and propaganda. What I discovered was a city staff that didn't just advocate for the project, but in some cases, has acted to undermine our efforts at a true dialogue. This conduct was at times so beyond the pale that I felt compelled to make a formal complaint. This conduct shows that claims of impartiality are false and that the EIR conclusions are not objective, but are tainted by special interests and hidden agendas. I don't see that lightly, and I take no pleasure in it, but I have to state that for the record. And lastly, in terms of hazardous waste, I looked over the plan, and it makes a lot of sense, but in one case, it does fall short, is inadequate. And that is in the testing of arsenic along the Old Elsberg. Along with all of them, any disturbance of the soil, need to test it for things that a prudent person, based on past history, could expect, and then decide what to do with it. And in the case of arsenic, you would take it to a Class III landfill. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your attention.
Paul, just one question, that last part, the disturbance of the soil, you're concerned about disturbing it, making it airborne, and anything that's in the soil?
This is our only chance to clean that up, and I live downstream from it. So eventually, it's going to end up not only in our neighborhoods, but eventually the bay. So this is the time to do it right. So as with the PAMP facility, I'll be checking with county health to make sure that things are done properly and that corners are not cut.
I have some handouts. Can you... W E I. Here, he's going to give you some documents.
I do have more, by the way.
We need one more, Steph. Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just one second. I noticed that one of the council members left, and it's a public hearing, and I think it might be...
Yeah, why don't we just pause?
Let's take a short break.
Sure. Let's take a short break. That sounds good. Should I? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm interrupting your presentation, by the way.
Sorry?
I apologize for interrupting your presentation.
That's okay. I need time to take a deep breath, anyway. Mayor, councilors, my name is Feng Wei Li. I am the new -- I just got elected to as one of the board member of GSC and I'm also in my daytime job is a senior simulator at DreamWorks. So a lot of the data we show here is going to base on my basic physics knowledge I do at work. Okay, let's get started. So I want to get ugly first. So we call ourselves the city of good living, but I've been living -- I moved here for two years. I just -- well, that's considered relatively new. I have a newborn. He is five months, almost six months now. I believe he is watching the webcast. Hello, I don't know where the camera is. I think it's that one. Okay, sorry. But we don't -- we are not -- we're happy to have he come into the family, but we are not happy in general as living here and have to have known about this and have to even stand standing here fighting for this. That doesn't make me feel like living in a city of good living. We feel, as Ben said, we feel this last time in the planning commission meeting, that the whole thing feel like rigged. We have, in the end, they call for a vote, but they really telling everyone said that, okay, this is not approving the project, this is just certify. Certify the project and certify doesn't means you agree with the proposed project or you agree with the report. That's -- well, English is not my native language, but I believe in any dictionary, certify does means certain degree of approval. And I'm sure you're going to hear this soon later after this from one of the members. They're going to tell you that, okay, you vote for this, but you don't have to agree. You don't have to -- this is just certify. You get your chance to -- you get your entitlement later, but really, if you don't feel comfortable, there's nothing wrong says no to this project. Okay. So we've been spending our long time, we do so many researches to try -- we find so many evidence that prove that proof the final EIR is either incorrect or invalid. The plan -- but we present that to planning commission and they seems choose to -- they either rigged or choose to ignore all our comments. So here I have to -- I have to -- you get all the old data, but here I'm only presenting you some new data and hope to bring up some new thinkings. So parking, this is something old here, but there is simply just not enough parking. There will be, based on the research done by UC Urban, that we -- in the United States, we own 1.95 vehicles per household. And so that vehicles, so first, nobody going to rent an apartment, not going to rent two parking space. So we, the best case, we parking one in the apartment building and another one in the free parking spaces. So that means roughly 300 cars is going to trying to find free parking spaces. But those car has to share with all the retailers in the proposed project and the offices, employees in the project. Not only that, and on top of that, there will be subleasing tenants. We get to that later because this high density resident is very likely to have sublease and that's going to introduce even more vehicles. So I do simple math, approximately 700 vehicles is going to fighting for that 200 very far away parking spot. And then who -- nobody is going to do that. How -- what they're going to do, they're going to flood into east side of St. Carlos. They're going to take our curbs, take our driveways just for their convenience. And that's not to mention it's going to bring crimes, more traffic and dangers to the neighborhood. We have kids playing in the -- on the street. That's fine because there's not a lot of traffic, but not, there won't be if this project get built. So here I'm asking you not -- don't let the resident pay the price for your wrong decision. And in conclusion, for the parking aspect, the final EIR is impractical because it doesn't consider the flow, the real flow of the traffic. And let's go to transportation. We have a transportation expert presenting, but I have to say that sadly, his data and conclusion is incorrect. For example, I remember somewhere in the report, it says, although the parking space is very far away, but there's really no difference walking 0.5 miles and one mile. So people would choose to walk one miles to find a parking space. And we all know that's not true. If we can find, after a couple try, if we can find a easier, faster, closer parking spot, we're going to take it. That means we take the east side neighborhood, take parking spot. Not to mention, there will be -- also, there's so many doubt in that report. For example, it's comparing St. Carlos, which locating mid peninsula to Union City and St. Jose. It's, well, it's not even giant -- it's not even nearby cities. So first, they are completely different demographic and hence, they have different resident background and they probably have all different occupations too and would definitely have all different house prices. And all this data, well, this is just background data, but that what that did to is we are going to have different habit for using public transportation. Well, I'm not saying that the risk, that our community pattern is going to be certain way, but I'm just saying that the report is inapplicable. It's comparing apple to orange or more like you come, you buying a house and compare a three bedroom to a two bedroom. You say, okay, the two bedroom is a lot cheaper, so cheap, so we should buy the three bedroom the same price. That's not a good comparison. More about noise. We have so many discussion about noise and they simply just skim it. Simply the sun travel through space and it has this, it has reflection, refraction and diffraction effects to go around the obstacles. And this is now researched. I'm going to get to detail later. So because of all these different effects, it's turning the new building into a giant Consider like, try to picture just a giant speaker right next to the rail and facing to the east side neighborhood. Every exterior wall would become a new sun source and the sun in each building and the span, amplitude, the sun amplitude accumulate because of the wide span. So that, and I recall in final EIR, the researchers only consider taking distance from a single point source. Simply just says because the distance is such and such and the voice level is such and such, but they doesn't take the entire span, the entire reflection, refraction and diffraction of the new building to the east side neighborhood into account. Therefore, I have to say the final EIR is incompetent. My -- so there's no quick time. Seems like once I click it, it's -- okay, I'll work around this. Sorry for the delay. It's meant to be an animation. Okay, but we can still see, and also you have the printout. I'm so happy I have the printout now. This is how the sound track, sound, consider sound goes in straight line, but this trend here, I take a couple sample points, so each, on each point is emitting sound in each direction. So this is when the trend go by across this period of time and how far the sound of the trend would travel. It's pretty much travel in every direction because there's no obstacles. However, with the new building, it's reflecting 70 to 80 percent of the, percent of the sound to the east neighborhood with this, all this, all this building walls. And you can, I mean, I don't have to, you don't have to hear it, you just, the density of the line pretty much more or less means the amplitude of the sound. So you can see how much amplitude it bring in, bring to the east side neighborhood. Anyone know how I can present from, okay, this will work. Okay. So next to the, so that's not only the only effects to the sound. I bring this many times in the planning commission, but they choose to ignore. I don't know why, but we are not standing here just only because we live in east side. We also, we also consider the entire St. Carlos. The sound, the new building is going to create some focus noise toward the other side of the St. Carlos. The sound is going to reflect between gap, between gaps in the, between the building and focus to the west side, much more like when a home or when you're trying to talk to somebody in a long distance, you make this home shape gesture, it make the sound travel farther, further. And that also not considering final EIR. That makes final EIR inadequate. Yeah, also, I was hoping to have a video, but we just have to look at this picture. Remember that, remember the old picture is emitting to all direction, but now through this gap and the reflection and diffraction within this building, turning, making these channels of noises focusing and on some focus area is probably getting more even higher amplitude than the other, any, than any other places in St. Carlos. And it's just creating this channel shooting toward east side. You just have to wish you are not, you don't live on any of these new buildings. And that is not researched in final EIR. Boss noise. Also, somebody mentioned this too. This is what happens to the new resident in the new building. To reduce noise, the only thing, and that's also based on the sound export, the tenant has to close their windows all the time. But what happened to that? If you close windows, there's no outlet, so the sound would bounce back, bounce back and forth in the room and that, and that's simply just amplify the sound level. Think if you talk the same level in a closed room, it's much louder than you talk the same level in the outdoor. So that turning, just example here, is turning the new buildings into a subwoofer boxes and it's going to damage hearing in the long run. There's plenty of research talking about low frequency, how low frequency noise hurting human health. And also get somehow technical here, California building code requires ventilation in any habitable rooms. So according to the sound export, if we have to close all the windows and doors in order to keep a habitable living environment, that means those doors and windows cannot be considered as doors and windows because you just never going to open it. It's more like it's just a window shape decoration if you think that way. And that file, that make the building violate the building code. So they cannot build, they just cannot build a building this way. And the quick conclusion of all this is, a final EIR is ignorant, ignorant the fact that the window is not window, the bounce noise is hurting human health. So very quickly, I want to show, this is how the sound bouncing in the, in the building. And you can, if you compare to the earlier, earlier illustrations, this is even denser than any of the previous illustrations. That means they are, they are enduring much greater sound pressure than anyone else in the city. Air qualities. New constructions with no exceptions produce dust, methanol and heavy metal. We all know what dust cause asthma, heavy metal cause all kinds of long-term disease and methanol is somehow get, recently get more publicity is, it's pretty much, it's simply, it's in glue, so it's stored in, you can see methanol in plywood pans, manure and finishes. But study being show that it cause not only death and also even a small amount, it cause cancer, leukemia and, God, there's so many different words, but it's bad for you. So Etnos, because it's so deep in the glue, it can keep emit, it's emitting in two years in high concentrate, in high concentrations. So that, of course, that's been considered in any new constructions, but we are different because the construction site is so close to Kiertrain. The Kiertrain turbulence, if you ever see standing in the platform seeing the express going by, Kiertrain turbulence is very, very high and that is not considered in final EIR. That makes final EIR irresponsible. Here, I was also hoping have some interesting animation, but we just have to look at it still here. This is in one day, how far the toxin can travel from the train rail, from the new building to the neighborhood. It's not, it's bad, but it's not terrible. But when the, when the trend goes by, it kicks all this turbulence and it's going to try to carry all these toxins two times to three times further. And again, I have just have to say the report is irresponsible. It's not putting the report, it's not even considered, it's not even mentioned. Final EIR only consider direct lighting, but what is contribute to the illuminance we receive in our eye is including direct lighting and bounce lighting. Bounce lighting is simply just it, when the light is not direct, even though it's not the right heat, it hits somewhere else, but it bounce back. It can contribute up to 20%, up to 100% of the overall illumination. So although the new building might not cast shadow directly, because actually, we can already see the new building cast shadows on our houses already, but you might argue that, okay, that's not a lot of houses, but because it's But because it's casting all this big shadow area and this shadow area is just a big block that doesn't have bounce lighting, doesn't contribute to the surrounding, surrounding indirect lighting. That's going to reduce the, the illuminate, overall, overall illumination of adjacent area by twenty to a hundred percent. Again, this not study, it's not considered. All I asking is, is not even studied or mentioned in final EIR, in final EIR. And because of time, I pretty much do this one night. I don't have research on this aspect, but these are also very important, such as invasion of privacies. Oh, this high-rise building, they're going to see through our, our backyard, sees through our windows, sees through our skylight. And that is not studied. And that also violate, violates California Building Code. Crime rate. We own, we know that more people will, no judgment to the, to, I'm not making prediction what's, who is going to be new tenant, but more people, that means more crime rate. And for, in addition to new tenant, also, also there will be new commuters, new, the people use K-Train. They are going to our communities and bring more possibilities of crime. And finally, the electromagnetic field is also a really newly found, uh, factor affecting human health. As Tim says, okay, so go back a little bit. It's already measured a hundred units in the, around the trail. That means the new resident, the new resident is absorbing a hundred units every day. But just give you, give you a perspective, three units is considered safe in, we don't have the, I have to say, we don't have the standard here, but in more advanced country, like some North European, they, they say three unit is the, you have to below three unit to be, to, residential area has to below three. Not to mention, now that I know that the high-speed rail is going to put these transformers, that's also going to increase this number greatly. And also another example is, so microwave is depend on where you stand, but if you stand next to microwave is about eighty units. So consider yourself living in a microwave oven for that's probably what they, those new tenants' life is going to be. That also, that also tells us final EIR is negligent. Okay, this is the best part. Uh, willing to leave, who will want to leave there? I asking, I hope, I ask you to ask this question to yourself. If you happen like, one day if you lose all your money and you just have a fixed income, would you want to live here or just go to? There's plenty of, plenty of apartment building here for you to choose. There's, I'm tell Belmont, Foster City, Road Show, they are, they all have very good apartment. Why, given all these other choices, why will one live here? Actually, I cannot think of one. So I do some research. I take some of my own time. I talk to my friends and friends' friends during this, during October sixth to October twenty-sixth, ranging from full-time employees from Google, DreamWorks, Facebook to unemployed person. Uh, also I mentioned in the planning commission, I, I take, I talked to a, uh, I'm not sure about the political correct way to say it, but I, I talked to a guy who's sleeping on the bench next to Road City K-Train. And, well, I know him very well because his, his name's Bob. We talk sometimes, I think. And he's also in the survey. Okay, the result, the result is only one point nine two percent of the people want to stay, want to live there, given all the conditions, given like if he happen to have to move. But all other option is still, still, still open. And only, and ninety-eight point zero eight percent of people, of the people don't want to, just don't want to, don't, don't even want to consider that because there's a plenty of other choices. And out of this ninety, ninety-eight percent, ninety-eight point eight percent, actually a hundred percent of, almost, a hundred percent of full-time employee doesn't want to live there. That brings us to house value. We all knows, um, based on the old effect mentioned above, house, house value are based on the environment and humans, just, human expectation. So that's already directly impact the property value of the surrounding neighborhood. But what's going to happen next, indirectly next? Because based on the research of willing to leave, this is not going to attract middle-class families. They have to lower their income or open to sublease to attract people with lower socio-economical status. And that's just like, that's just going to lead to a cascading effect. For example, downgrade, not to make, first impact the, impact the property value, bring crimes, downgrade school, school district and so on. Just think, it's Palo Alto. I don't want to bring the racist, racism card here, but it's Palo Alto is a good example of policy lead to migration due to socio-economical status. So at one point, they have this policy, they decide to, I don't have to go to into into detail. They have the, they have the policy, they seems reasonable. They have to, they want to raise, raise the fee of certain group of people. And that just lead to all these big migrations and turn out it doesn't really do anything good to the, to the, to the overall communities. But that, so, so in the long, short term, of course, it's going to impact the east side of San Carlos. But we are, as, as, we are a group, as a, a one city. So unless you consider separating east side of San Carlos as east San Carlos, we are going to lower the east side, house value in the east side is going to lower the overall rating and value of San Carlos. So in conclusion, final EIR is negligent, incomplete, incompetent, ignorant, inculpable, applicable and irresponsible. They need to redesign and redo the research, back to the drawing board, come up with a better plan. Even if the project barely meets the, okay, so backward a little bit. We, I, we see this a lot in final year report. It just says it has no significant report, uh, no significant impact if they do, we do such and such and such. But there's no plan to do that such and such and such. And something is that such and such and such is even rely on some volunteer, some volunteering of the resident, like if everyone just start to take less car, there will be enough parking. That's like telling, how about we just, rich people just donate all their money and there will be no poverty. It's the same thing. So even if the project barely meets the, the no impact, okay, so pretend, it's not true, but pretend it really meets the no impact standard barely, it still bring no value to the cities. It's only, it's only bringing, bringing damages. We, as the city of good living should use a higher, should definitely use a higher standard to make a better living. And I found this interesting enough. I found this on Wikipedia and on our city profile in our webpage. I just said, San Carlos, city of good living, aim for a small-town feel. And everything they do here is against this principle. And here I'm, I'm asking to, you to have some sympathy. We are the new family just in the, just in town, struggling our life. The last thing I want to see is seeing my kids living in shadow, in dust, in toxins, have to face the danger of strangers walking my door, walking in front of my door, strange cars and, and lose, lose the, the beautiful view. So please, um, don't, please don't, based on the, 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 the the beautiful view, beautiful vision of the city, please do not ruin the city and please do not sacrifice our quality of life and health for their revenue or ego. Thank you.
Thank you. David Crabbe.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'm David Crabbe. I live here in San Carlos. I'm an architect. And I'm giving you a handout, which is sort of an update of the letter I sent you back in December twenty about an alternative approach to the transit village from the Holly Street north portion of it, which seems to be one of the areas that's of most concern to the east side neighbors, uh, to the project. And I, I got involved with this, the transit village, or were of it about two and a half years ago when they were doing the draft EIR. And I sat in on some meetings and I heard the, at that point, the east side residents make the same points that they're making now. And I listened to them and I felt that there was something that possibly could be done to at least respond to some of their concerns from an architectural point of view. But I also have the, the desire to see the full two hundred eighty units there because I am very much supporting a transit area development. And the more units, that's a, a size of units, forty units per acre and so on, somewhat larger, is about the minimal that should be really within a transit area development. So I've been trying to work on a compromise architectural plan. Since I'm an architect, I get a little spare time, it's like playing with this thing. And the, the letter I sent you before had, uh, a, a scheme that, uh, the, the plan is, it would be changed now. But if you can remember it all, what I was trying to do was to drop the levels of the buildings facing the east side residents, which relates to the stepping back type of situation. And if you look at the diagram that you have now, there are several things here, but it's, it's color-coded. And if you look at the color code, I actually, uh, converted this project. I still have two hundred eighty units, basically their units. I actually plugged in their units with a couple of exceptions where I had to kind of tweak it a little bit with, with the unit. And I come up with buildings who are primarily two and three stories, or primarily three stories with some two-story elements facing the east side residents. Four stories in portions along El Camino and actually some three-story along El Camino. And the way that I did that was the original plan, if you, this drawing I just handed to you is the bottom, the top portion is basically a diagram of their project, which is four buildings, very large buildings, one very large building at the end, smaller one, another big large building and a smaller one. And the areas that seem to be of most concern to the neighbors are the, this area from the first street down because this, this corner is a commercial type of facility. So that quite so concerned about shadows and so on. And so there were some issues I think that were talked about from the east side residents that, there was some talk about view corridors and so on. And the architects of the legacy plan tried to accommodate that in a couple of places. And if you look at the top, the, the top drawing, which is the legacy plan, these areas that come through are view corridors. And so they have created two view corridors through here. They, this one on the end, they is, like, sort of bouncing back is, it basically means you can't see. You're going to see the building, you're not going to see through. And that one apparently is, is impossible to do a view corridor there pretty much because of the utility line here that causes some problems. But the second building here, they actually have blocking the view as well. And so I was converted this to a, a five buildings instead of four and opened another, a third, an extra view corridor through. So the, if you, hopefully you, you did in fact have a chance to read my original letter and look at those drawings. And if you remember, there were a couple of perspectives in there to show how this project might look in comparison to the massing of the, the project that Legacy did. I think it would improve quite a bit. The east side is not going to give them their panoramic view that they would like, unfortunately. But they have talked about maybe being willing to live with three-story buildings. And this, when you start looking at how you see a building and how it, it, it steps back, this allows it to give the sense of a three-story building, even though it may go up to four stories on the El Camino side, because you don't see that four-story because of the way you do it. And that cross-section in that first letter I did kind of explains how that works. And so they've talked about building height and bulk, so that I've tried to approach that. Talked about noise back, bounce back. Well, if the buildings drop down to two stories and three stories along there, there's going to be less of that potentially. Talked about view blockage. Well, we got one extra view corridor, still not great. It's, you know, not ideal, sorry. And then shadows. This is going to reduce the shadows, uh, potentially toward the other. Though I don't believe the shadows is much of a problem as, as east side people think they are. But it would because the buildings would be lower. So what I'm asking you tonight is, well, two things. First, I, I'd like you to, what do you have to do? Certify, certify the, the current EIR to get this, this project moving. It's been sitting for two and a half years, just to get it moving. And the, this product, this alternative scheme that I have is built into the EIR as it exists, as those alternative massing schemes. It's not exactly what I've done, but the concept is there. And basically, the EIR says that if you, you know, change the massing, it's, it's not going to affect the EIR one way or another. So I would, first step one, certify the EIR. So let's see if we can go to step two, which is the entitlements page, section. But in, in stage two, I would like to see the council include not only the planning commission's improvement measures as they sit now, but also an expectation that a revised massing plan will, will be developed to mitigate some of the east side residents' concerns. Because if you don't tell them now, the, what you've got is what you've got. You know, they, they've been going along and unless they get some strong sense from the, this, this panel, they are going to just keep with their four-story buildings. Now, I can't hundred percent guarantee that it will work perfectly if they, if they look at this alternative scheme, but at this point, I don't feel there's been any serious attempt to in fact try it. Uh, and I had met with the architect for a couple of hours one day and looked it over and, and I think she took it back and briefly looked at it. She's not obviously being paid to do a full-blown study and so, you know, she didn't go much further on it. But I, I believe that she's a very competent person and could in fact pull this off. So again, if you could include, uh, in addition to the improvement measures, some expectation that you would like to see some sense or some proof that the Legacy has looked at the alternative massing alternatives and along, you know, in conjunction with the east side residents and it moves into that, that next stage. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to speak on this project while we have the public hearing open? Okay. Seeing done, entertain a motion to close.
Mr. Evans, can we make a motion to close the public hearing?
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Groll cut.
Yes. Okay, I think this is where we get into our list of questions. So where do we want to start? Mr. Olbert, did you want to start or do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to start. May I ask, just in terms of a, a process thing, do we want to do like one or two questions each and then hand off the baton basically? And that way, we don't have one person?
I'm certainly open to that idea if, if the rest of the council is happy with that, bouncing around a little bit.
Let's give it a try.
Okay. And I don't know that we'll get through all of our questions tonight. And I don't know that we'll get through all of our questions tonight. This is our last item, but depends on how late you want to go and keep continuing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a, just, I wanted to point something out since you're at the question point in the, in the meeting. We have our special legal counsel, Anna Shimko, here tonight to answer any SEQA questions that you might have about process. And she did have a hand in developing the EIR that you are considering tonight.
So as if we want to ask questions about EIR and SEQA and that sort of thing, if we have any of those, we should do that first.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think before we get into discussion, maybe the time to do that. Yeah. All right. All right.
Great.
Let's fire away with questions and per Mr. Rubens' comments, if you have something that would pertain to the EIR process, SEQA and so forth, tonight would be the night to do that while she's here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question, I want to start with something fairly simple and straightforward. I'd like to get some more detail and actually be pointed to by staff in the EIR analysis of where the impact that the project will have on the nature and character of San Carlos is contained. This is an issue that is of potential concern to me and it's something that a couple of the speakers even have touched on, that this development could trigger a fairly significant change in the character of the way San Carlos looks and feels, for lack of a better term, along El Camino Real. And I'm not sure I actually saw much of an in-depth analysis about that.
Councilmember, my name's Michael K. As you know, I'm with Atkins. And nature and character of San Carlos is, to me, a very, more of a planning term. There's a certain level of vagueness to it. I'm not sure that that is something that's typically described in a SEQA document. Just offhand, I'm thinking that it will probably be included in such topics as visual and also compliance with land use plans and regulations as described in your general plan. So I would point to the visual impact section as well as the land use section of the document.
Yeah. I recall, you know, in reading those sections, seeing some mention of it. I didn't see what I would think of as kind of an integrated characterization of it. And I also forgot to explain in context for my question that it's an issue that was particularly highlighted for me in discussions I had with a resident in town, just to be clear, not from the East Side, who actually spent most of his career involved in defending against SEQA lawsuit challenges. And so I don't, I'm not trying, you know, I may have misunderstood part of what he told me, but I don't want to necessarily say we should all accept his expertise, but it was not a casual question and it was sort of from his perception. It was kind of odd that there wasn't more of a focused discussion of that. So, but that answers my question, that the element, that answer is basically scattered through a number of different sections.
I would suggest that the nature and character of San Carlos is really driven by the general plan as a planning document. The SEQA document, again, is, is, looks at the potential adverse effects of a project based on the SEQA guidelines. And again, I don't, there's not specific sections in the document where we're talking about nature and character. And to me, those are more planning terms than SEQA terms.
I understand that and I probably have a slightly different take than you do on how that applies in this particular instance. I do know that there is discussion about how, even when looking at a particular project, it's appropriate to consider the growth-inducing aspects of a project. And that's in fact part of what my thinking was about how this, they use the word "trigger", could trigger development. Development which may be in fact consistent with the general plan, but it still may trigger development nonetheless.
And growth inducement is described in the SEQA document. There is a section on, but again, you have to remember that SEQA looks at physical changes that might be associated with the construction of a project or whatever document or type of, either it's a program, if it's a planning document, or on project level for a project such as this.
Well, my understanding is, that's certainly true, but my understanding is that SEQA is actually looking at all significant effects on the environment.
Physical environment.
Yes, but the physical environment includes a number of the things that I was referring to.
Okay.
Okay. That, you know, my question basically was, where is the discussion? And the answer is, the discussion in general is not in a particular place. So I will pass the baton off.
I'd like to just make one comment and a question for staff. Because the answer to Mr. Olbert's question was compliance with general plan. And then when Mr. Hilborn spoke, he talked about certain sections of the general plan and city guidelines that he says at least are not being followed. Now, I'm not familiar with those sessions that he's talking about, so it'd be nice to have some answer from the staff showing to us of what it was he was referring to and how either staff or the applicant feels those sections were complied with. Because I think that does get to what you were, you were talking to according to how your answer, your question was answered.
There is a section in the SEQA document, in the land use discussion, on whether or not the project complies with plans and policies in the general plan that were adopted to either avoid or minimize significant environmental effects. That, the key there under SEQA is those that were adopted to minimize or avoid significant environmental effects or changes on the environment. So the determination of whether or not the project complies with the general plan itself is really outside the SEQA process. The SEQA process is specific to those policies adopted for environmental effects of a project. Outside, of course, we have a discussion of whether or not the project complies with the zoning for the area or the general plan land use designations of the specific project site.
You confused me with your answer because if I understood what Mr. Hilborn was saying, he's saying that, look, your general plan was approved inside of a SEQA process.
Right.
So therefore, when you go into an actual specific project, that project has to comply with your general plan and the general plan guidelines, the visual guidelines that are given in the general plan for development. And again, I don't know what section he was referring to, I haven't read it, so I don't know what specifically he was referring to. But I would like to have something from staff that says, okay, Mr. Hilborn was referring to this section, this is what it says, and this is how we feel or the applicant feels it does comply. Or maybe staff looks at it and says, Mr. Hilborn's got a very good point and it doesn't comply and the applicant needs to mitigate that issue. Is there, is there something that I'm missing?
Okay. So the general plan designates land use designations within the city, as you know. Now, there's specific land use designations for the area for, under which the project is being proposed. So the SEQA document looks at what that land use designation is and makes a determination on whether or not the proposed project falls within what's applicable under that land use designation. That's described in the environmental document. SEQA also has a standard of significance that states whether or not the project would comply with policies in the general plan that have been adopted to avoid or minimize adverse environmental effects. That's also included in the environmental document. There's a table in the land use section which lists those policies that have been adopted in the general plan in association with environmental effects and then whether or not the project complies with those policies or doesn't comply with those policies. The specific reference made by the speaker, I would need to look a little more in-depth into the environmental document.
And that's what I'm asking for is that, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I would have to explore that a little more in-depth.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Did you have another question or you felt like the balance of your time?
Do you mind if I step in on this issue just a little bit?
Go ahead.
Because it is confusing.
Yeah.
Just for reference, for those of you who have been wondering who I am the last couple of meetings, I am Anna Shimko and I am a SEQA practitioner, a lawyer. I've represented the city of San Carlos on special projects for a number of years now, including the Palo Alto Medical Foundation project. So I was engaged in 2010 in order to assist the staff in reviewing the responses to the draft EIR, developing the final EIR, and giving my and my team's view of what additional studies needed to be undertaken, what additional discussions needed to be in the document in order to assure from our standpoint, obviously you have to decide for yourselves, but from our standpoint, that the EIR was legally sufficient and legally valid. This issue of general plan consistency under SEQA is actually very confusing. Let me see if I can shed a little light on it. Everything that Mr. K said was absolutely correct. In terms of the standards of significance, the measurements that you use to decide whether or not an impact is significant under SEQA, certain of those come from your general plan. Where general plan policies were adopted for the express purpose of ameliorating environmental impacts, a really good example of one in San Carlos is the traffic level of service goal that is adopted of .85. Clearly, that was adopted in order to address environmental impacts. So if the project will not comport with that portion of the general plan, then the project will have a significant impact. In that case, the project would probably have a significant impact under traffic and it might have one under land use as well for failing to comport with a general plan policy adopted to protect the environment. Now, I believe what the earlier speaker was reading from was that portion of the EIR in the land use section that says, even though we're going to go through the policies in the general plan that were adopted for environmental purposes and judge whether or not there are land use impacts, the ultimate decision of whether the project is consistent with the EIR is one that is up to the decision-making agency at a later point and indeed involves a lot of balancing and weighing of general plan policies. And it involves the entirety of the general plan, not just those policies that were picked out for EIR purposes as addressing environmental impacts. And so SEQA specifically does say, for instance, that the environmental setting section of an EIR might address overall inconsistencies with plans and policies. And it's very clear under SEQA that that's an environmental setting topic that's separate from the impacts of the EIR. I don't know if I've helped or confused things, but it is a very confusing issue. And at least from my review of the EIR, the EIR did it accurately and sufficiently by pulling out the policies of the general plan that were aimed at environmental impacts. But then down the road, when the project comes back to you for consideration, you are the ones that get to decide, that have to decide, whether or not the project comports with the general plan as a whole. And if it doesn't, it can't be approved. Does that help at all?
Sort of. I'm going to go ahead and open it up and let people ask questions. They might come back to you.
Okay.
And I think, stay there because I think Mr. Collins has a question very direct.
Thank you, Anna. I don't know if you, you may have cleared things up, you may have made things more money.
Well, it's really not my fault, it's the legislature, so we can take it up with them.
Maybe you can help me. I heard something that I think I need some clarification. Are you saying that when the EIR is being formulated and the decision is being made between what has no impact or significant or less than significant, that those judgments are made based on what is generally in the general plan?
Those judgments are based on thresholds of significance. Sometimes those come from the general plan. For instance, there are traffic level of service thresholds that come from the general plan. There are often noise thresholds that come from the general plan. There are other thresholds that don't come from the general plan that come from, for instance, the SEQA guidelines and the checklist under SEQA that is used to formulate the thresholds. They come from commonly accepted scientific principles. So there are a lot of genocides of the thresholds, but they definitely often do come from the general plan in the various topic areas. And then in the land use section itself, there's a specific question in the land use checklist that asks whether the project will conflict with policies in the general plan that were adopted to protect the environment. And there, some of those are going to be standalone and not addressed in the other sections. And some of them will have been addressed in the other sections like noise and traffic.
So basically, the EIR has, depending on the category, has responded to those guidelines, whether they be SEQA guidelines or general plan guidelines or some other guidelines. And that has happened in this particular EIR, that's what you're saying?
It has in terms of analyzing the impacts on the physical environment, as Mr. K said. There may well be other policies in the general plan that have to do with things that I think Councilmember Olbert is struggling with, that have to do with community character and feel and things that aren't necessarily captured by a physical improvement and a physical impact of the project. And those are the types of things that you will be looking at when you get to the project approval phase, when you're looking at all of the general plan policies and the zoning and everything else.
So that, so while the EIR can be technically perfect, the overall project could just either feel right or feel wrong?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
And as, you know, I think general plans are written, hence the title, in a sufficiently general manner that you're going to be able to bring your views of whether that project feels right or doesn't feel right. And you can mold that project in the city's image when you get to that point in the process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Clapper?
Having been diligently involved with this project going back to 2009 with the Planning Commission, I don't have any pre-discussion questions and so I'm going to help expedite this portion of the program by relinquishing my time to the rest of you.
Okay. Very good. Appreciate that. Come over here to Mr. Grisilli.
I just had a couple, but I know we're just asking one at a time. Mr. Seville, we have 281 units, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Crabbe had 221, you know, in your, wherever Mr. Crabbe is. You have 200.
Public project.
And you're putting 60 somewhere else or?
By the trace station.
By the trace station, okay. I just, because I couldn't figure out the difference there. Anyway, it was said by the speaker and I, it's probably in here, but I probably missed it or I can't remember it. Are we doing, is the SEQA document speak to in lieu fees or 15% low income or, could you speak to that for a moment?
I can't remember what the percentage was.
Yeah, we have a BMR ordinance, but it's separate from the SEQA document.
Okay, so it wasn't in there?
Right.
Okay. So I didn't miss it.
It's a requirement of the SEQA.
No, but it'll come, it'll come back in the entitlement side, it'll come back.
That's right.
So it'll either be 15%, is 15% the correct number?
Well, 15% is our requirement as a city for development, right?
All right.
But this is an apartment project. So in our, a couple of things, in our ordinance, it says the developer has a choice. You can either pay a fee or you can provide the 15% units of those.
It's the developer's choice, not our choice?
That's right. It's the developer's choice.
And that's what, in our code?
Yes, it's in the code. However, there's been some recent law, lawsuits that have further defined what cities can ask a developer to do.
Okay.
There was a case called the Palmer case.
Right, the Palmer case, right.
That said that cities can't require a developer who's building apartments to provide those units in the development.
All right. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we clarify, the speaker went to, said something and I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that. Thank you.
I have a few questions, remember. I wanted to ask, and maybe this is for the attorney, the issue that I had, even with, like I said before, with Wheeler, is already we have a, you know, a major artery that comes in and out of San Carlos, being San Carlos Avenue, that is heavily impacted in the afternoon, from anywhere from 3:30 to 4 o'clock in the afternoon until probably about 6 or so, 6 or 7, depending on the evening and depending on the season actually, whether it's, in the wintertime, it's usually worse, something about being dark and wet and so And already, at least for me, when I've driven through there. And already, at least for me, when I've driven through there, it's not acceptable. There's been times where I've gotten off the freeway and I'm, I make it through the light at Industrial, and it's two or three light changes before I get through the El Camino intersection. And then when I get through the El Camino intersection, it's happened to me twice recently, where I think the traffic's going to flow, and I go through the intersection and I get stuck, and the light changes on me, and now the tail end of my truck is sitting on the El Camino, and cars are having to go around, you know, a few cars, because then it's a stop sign, so eventually you get through. But that's very uncomfortable, and it's very unsafe. And so I look at the situation we have right now, and I look at the fact that concurrently with this project, we're also looking at Wheeler Plaza, so that's a, that's a, I forget what the term is, it's a foreseeable project, is Wheeler. And that's, help me out, Al, how many, how many units is Wheeler Plaza?
108.
108 units?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got 108 units there, we're talking 281 units here. That's a lot of new customers driving their cars around in San Carlos, all trying to use, well, maybe not all of them, but, you know, a good percentage of people trying to get in and out of town on Holly Street. And I don't see, I didn't see it addressed in Wheeler Project, and I don't see it addressed here, except if I understood it correctly, just saying, well, we'll pay into a fund to improve traffic down the road, and we'll look at that down the road. Problem is, the road's already so impacted that, to me, it's something that you should do now, even before you dig any dirt for, for any new units. So how do you address that with this process, or do you?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things, and maybe part of it's legal at the end, but the first part of, to answer your earlier, even earlier question, Holly Street was investigated as part of this EIR, and so it looked at traffic impacts from this specific project. Holly Street was identified as a problem in our community back with the PAMF EIR, and it identified what the problems were and what the mitigations for that project, for that project were. Then our general plan came up and said, well, if you develop any more projects, these are all going to contribute to that issue. So we have to fix the problem. The fix is to fix the interchange, the Holly 101 interchange, and there's a, there's a plan in place to do that, and the city's moving forward with those mitigations. So there are mitigations to fix the problem, and it will take a number of years to fix the problem, and all these developments are required to pay into the fund to fix that problem. So that's what this development needs to do. One, it needs to pay into the traffic fee to fix the problem, which is going to be fixed in the future. Two, it has to reduce the traffic impacts by 20%, or its traffic by 20% through transportation demand measures. So my, the legal question may be, can a city delay or deny a project if it's mitigated, if you mitigate that impact, and the EIR says it's, you can mitigate those significant issues or any traffic issues with this project? Can a city then either delay or not approve a project as a result of that? So that's the legal question. But the fixes for those problems are in the future, they're in place, funding sources are being pursued, drawings are being put together to fix the problem. So maybe the attorneys could.
So you said fix 101, and you also said TD, what are those? TDM program?
So there's, so one of them is a physical fix to the roadway system, which is in place. We know where the problem is, there's a, there's a plan in place to fix it, developments have to pay into it. The second piece is, this development is required to reduce its own trips by at least 20%. That's one of our requirements, one of our city's requirements, is that they have to do a number of different measures to reduce the trips, just right off the top. So those are two kinds of things that mitigate the significance of impacts as a result of this project.
And then you said, so then the legal question is, can the city delay projects until the fix is in?
Right.
But we don't know the answer to that.
There may be an answer to that.
There may be an answer to that.
While the answer's being contemplated, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Second.
Well, please have your vote, excuse me.
Oh, there was a motion.
And a second.
A second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Mr. Rubin?
Okay, so, well, I, you know, I hate to, from this point, talk about something that could potentially lead to legal issues for the city, because I think that's the point that Al is trying to raise, is, you know, what is the city's legal liability if we say, well, all projects that are out there that might be in conformance with the general plan or general policies of the general plan, can we stop development or have a moratorium on development until a certain project is done? I think that would create some legal issues for the city based upon the property rights of developers, but I don't know, you know, there's, this would be a complex issue whether on a case, this case or that case, could we wait? I think it would probably have to do with the timing. Is the project about to be built? That would be the mitigation measure, if you will, that has been contemplated for years, and other developments have been funding it. Because, you know, if it was about to happen, I think that you might have a better justification to say, yeah, it'd be better as a condition of approval of your project to wait until this project is done, because there'd be an impact related to you building your project at the same time as this traffic improvement was being built. But in the abstract, I think it would be difficult to hold up a project based upon something that may be built in the future or at some point in the more distant future.
Well, here's where I'm having a problem, okay? I'm just, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a guy that got elected to council, and I design houses for a living, okay? So I approach this like the average Joe, I think. Try to look at it in a commonsensical way. And so I've got a question for you. Why the hell go through an EIR process if we've got something that we know is an environmental problem existing right now in our town? Cars sitting out there on Holly, idling away, burning fossil fuels, polluting their neighborhood over there on the east side, and we're not doing anything about it except building more projects that we know, as soon as those projects get built, they are going to impact that? Meanwhile, we say, I, no disrespect here, Mr. Seve, but I understand your answer. We've got a project, we think, you know, we're going to try and mitigate things out there at 101 and Holly. I'm thinking to myself, okay, that's fine, but how, number one, how is fixing things out at 101 and Holly going to mitigate the whole corridor when, when the problem, a big part of the problem is not people trying to get from San Carlos out to Holly, it's in the afternoons, people coming off that highway, and if we make it better so they can get off faster, it's just going to create more traffic on Holly? But that's number one. Number two, I don't know, when, when you try to do these things, buildable projects to fix infrastructure problems, seems to me, you build the project first, see what the results are, and ask yourself, did we fix the problem? For instance, when we, when we built the grade separation, we were told, this is going to improve traffic in San Carlos. If you remember the old days, sitting there, you know, here comes the train, bing, 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 you know, every time I go to Redwood City, I'm reminded of this, and you're stuck. So we said, let's build a grade separation, traffic will smooth, you know, be more smooth. We built the grade separation. I think for the most part, we've got some other issues that were unintended consequences of the grade separation and the whole thing there, but for the most part, if you remember those days of sitting there waiting for the train to go by, it's an improvement. But we know it's an improvement because we've built it, it's there, we can, we live with it. So help me out here, why go through an EIR process if you can identify something that's an environmental problem, you know you're only going to make it worse, and the only solution is we're going to pay into a fund for something that's down the road that may or may not fix it? I'm sorry, I just feel like I'm being dishonest with the citizens of San Carlos as an elected official, saying that's the solution. Live with it for five, 10 years. There's nothing we could do about it. It's, I don't, why go through an envi, it's called an environmental impact report, we can identify impacts to problems we already have, but we're not going to do anything about it, except kick the can down the road. I just, I'm.
And if I may start out here, one of the big problems is that the financing to build the project is anticipated, the Holly 101 project is anticipated to come from the fees paid by development. So if we don't do any development, we're not going to have any money to pay for the 101 project. It's not going to, it's not going to be funded, it's not going to happen. And so, you know, unless you want to do a tax measure and you want to say, and this would be a perfectly reasonable way to do it, go to the people in San Carlos and say, hey, look, we've allowed you to live here, develop here, increase the size of your home here for years, and that's created this problem on Holly, and now you need to tax yourselves to pay for this project, and it'll, you know, it's in the $20 million range in terms of this, you know. If we're not willing to do that, the only way that the project's ever going to get paid for is through development fees, and that's what we've, as a community, chosen to do up to this point. In terms of, you know, whether or not your opinion on, would the project that's being proposed fix the full problem and the timing and all that, I'd leave that to the traffic engineers of the world to talk about more so than myself, but just in terms of how we would go about paying for a project of that magnitude, there's really only two choices, either development impact fees or a large-scale community tax measure.
Well, I'm going to let other people speak, but just one more, one more comment to that, is the other problem I see with the solution of, well, we're going to allow development, and the development will create fees so that we can do this mitigation measure, the thing, the other thing I'm afraid of is we, we do the mitigation measure, but by, by getting the money from development, and there's more people and so forth, is you're really not mitigating. You're, you're making an improvement, but the additional traffic that you're bringing in, you're not going to change the status of things. You might make Holly, maybe you made Holly a four-lane deal, but because of all the development you did to pay for it, you're back to where you started. You still have a clogged drain.
Well, you know, maybe I'll refer this to Mr. Seve, just for confirmation, but I believe that the numbers that are being used in the general plan and the Holly report look at that long-term build-out. So they're anticipating the development that's occurring between now and then, and saying that that project will improve the traffic situation, not that as it, not as it exists today, but as the general plan assumes the community would exist in the future.
That's correct.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, I don't think you're quite correct there.
The transportation analysis that's included in the environmental document considers general plan build-out for the cumulative scenario. And so what you've, what you've created with your environmental document for this specific project is a way to determine that project's contribution to the adverse traffic effect, then you can make a determination on what that, the financial contribution, that traffic, this, this project would have to do towards those transportation improvements. So I am a SEQA practitioner, so I would, I just want to emphasize that this, this is a worthwhile process for the city. Okay. Let's go down here, and then we'll go to you.
All right. I don't know who this question is for, hopefully one of the four of you can answer this. Mr. Seve, you said that the Transit Village, like every other development, has to pay into a traffic mitigation fund? Is there a formula for that, or can, do we just pick a number? How does that work?
Yes, there is a formula in the, in the, there's an ordinance, a traffic mitigation fee ordinance. So there is a formula in there. I don't have it in front of me, but yes.
Is it, is it based on the cost of the project, the expected profit from the project, the acreage?
Based on size of the project and its direct impact. I think it might be square footage-based, if I recall correctly. I don't know if the Public Works Director, I don't think he's still here, but my recollection is based on square footage, and a Nexus study was done, council considered the impact fee, and it was also that the fee was intended to be, like the city manager mentioned, to be exacted over a period of time to pay for those, it, big enough, the fee was big enough per square feet, square footage, to pay for this construction project over time.
So approximately, what is the, what do they expect it to pay in the traffic mitigation or pay into this traffic mitigation fund?
I think that we can probably dig that number up for you in the next, we'll try and dig it up. I don't have it right in front of me.
That's okay. No, at some point along the line, along the line, it would be useful, and that would be in addition to any in lieu fee that they would pay for affordable housing?
Yes, and park dedication fees, school fees, building permit fees, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just respond to that particular issue and the one that the mayor's been raising really quickly? It's an issue that SEQA has addressed and the case law has addressed quite substantially, even more over the last few years, that where, with all of the projects that are being planned in the area, there is expected to be a cumulative traffic impact, it's usually traffic, and there has been identified an improvement to fix that. If it's reasonably clear that that improvement is going to go forward, and that the project can pay its fair share to construct that improvement, then the project's contribution to the overall impact can be determined to be less than significant on the basis of the payment into the fund to create that improvement. So that is something that is blessed by the SEQA laws and by the case law, just so you know. Now, that doesn't mean that at the end of the day, you have to decide to approve the project in its current form or at all. The only thing we're addressing here is the sufficiency of the EIR to carry you forward to that next step.
One quick question. Are you allowed to say in any of this process, this is what, you know, we've studied this as a city, we've come up with this 101 interchange fix? I've got a question about that later, but we've come up with this fix. So seven years down the road, we do the project, the fix is in. We look at the traffic, we still have a problem. Are we allowed any kind of caveat to go back to the developer and say, we did the fix that we had in the EIR, we still have a problem, we think you're, you know, we're attributing part of that problem to your 281 units and your commercial development here, we need to do something else to fix the problem, and we're coming to you for the funds? Part of the funds?
Generally, no. SEQA is a, takes a prospective look, and you need, you need to be correct.
Okay.
Well, in fact, that may, that may emphasize the importance of taking a liberal view of what the foreseeable projects are and impacts, because you can't afford to be wrong.
Right, and that's going to, I'll let other people ask some questions, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask the question, how does Holly 101 fix the problem of Holly Street corridor? That fix, you know, it's a barbell, that's one end of the barbell, you still got the other end.
That's for the experts on traffic to answer.
You're right, yeah.
My recollection is that that was the feasible, the only feasible improvement that was identified years ago in order to alleviate the congestion on Holly, which, as you have mentioned, has been acknowledged for a number of years.
Yeah, okay. Somebody else down here for a moment?
Mr. Seve, I have an answer to Councilmember Collins' question.
I forgot the question, what was it? He probably knows.
The mitigation fees are $576,386.
I thought Councilmember Collins had asked what the formula was.
Oh, I thought he asked the dollars.
I asked both.
Okay, yeah, I don't have the formula this evening, but I did have the dollar at least.
The issue was 500,000?
576,386.
Thank you.
The, let me talk a little bit about, or turn a little bit now to visual impacts. When I read resolution, the infamous Resolution 2003-79, there's this item in it. When I read resolution, the infamous resolution 2003-79, there's this item in it 4.849, and it states, and I'll just read it here, "Project architecture should incorporate varying heights that are sensitive to the scale and massing of east side residential areas, and accommodate and preserve significant views." And so my initial question is, I have a couple of parts here, but my initial question is, my understanding is that resolution is effectively part of the city's general plan, it was incorporated by reference when the general plan was modified. That seems to me to indicate that at the time that that was drafted, the people who drafted it felt that there were at least some significant views that were at risk. And so I'm a little bit confused, I've always been a little bit confused in reading the EIR analysis, that basically, my understanding came to the conclusion that there are no significant view impacts. So I see a dichotomy between the analysis that's in the EIR and the perspective of, I presume, former council members and staff at the time.
May I add to that, just one point as well, is when the grade separation was put in, that was an issue, was significant views from the east side.
Yeah, that's what this is derived from, from the BERM project.
Okay, all right, very good.
Sure. I'm sorry, if I missed the point of your question, I'll try and answer it, and if I don't, please, please correct me, and I'll try to emphasize more. First, I want to talk about the grade separation project, and you're correct, with the grade separation project, there was a determination that implementation of the project would have an adverse effect on views from the east side to the hills, and if I recall correctly, that was determined to be a significant unavoidable effect. That was based on the situation that was present prior to the construction of the BERM. The BERM is now in place, our analysis has to look at the change in existing conditions that would result from implementation of the San Carlos Transit Village project. The existing conditions include the presence of the BERM. So the BERM is already blocking some of the views from the east side of the hills, we would be building on the other, I'm sorry?
Please, please don't, this is actually council staff discussion.
So the BERM is blocking, potentially, or partially blocking some of those views, the project is going to be built on the other side of that BERM, our analysis is based on the existing condition with the BERM, that's why we have a determination in the environmental document that the visual impacts would be less than significant.
If I may interrupt, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you explaining that for the record, because that was very clear from the EIR. The point I'm making is actually a little bit different. 2003-79 was adopted after the BERM project was approved, after the EIR for the BERM project was, the determination was made, hey, it's got a significant impact, but it's unavoidable, we need to do this, public needs override, we're going to do it. And I understand that, even though I don't accept, as Mr. Rubens knows from many of our long discussions, I understand the concept in Sequo about how that resets the baseline, hence your point about looking at the incremental impact. My point is actually simpler. 2003-79 says, a group of city leaders, after that project was approved, said, there are significant views. One might almost argue that, and, you know, different people can look at the same data and come to different conclusions, but one could almost argue, hey, we don't need to actually do the analysis, because it was already done and determined that there was at least some significant view that was going to be impacted by development. That's really my point. And maybe another way of asking that is, is was that perspective that I see codified in 2003-79 factored into the analysis that was actually done in the EIR? In other words, did you go back and factor in, okay, these people thought there were significant views here?
To best my knowledge, that was factored in. We looked at what the general plan said about views within the city, what the city, the general plan determined were significant views, view corridors within the city, and we based our determination of impacts on the visual resources in the, of the proposed project, on that information from the city general plan.
Okay. If I may, let me just tag on to this, because it is a good launching point for another question I wanted to ask, which may actually be an Anna question. One of the things that I found very striking about going through the EIR analyses, and I'm using it in the context of the example of the loss of significant views, but it actually percolates through to a number of different things, there seems to be an implicit assumption that the impact is linear to the amount of view being lost. So for example, losing, and I know it's not done mathematically this way, but losing, having, if you start out having 30% of your view obfuscated, and you go to 40%, that that's considered to be the same thing as going from 90 to 100, because they're both a 10% change. And I have to say, from a common sense point of view, that actually makes no sense to me, okay? Because losing the last little bit of something is far more significant than losing a little bit kind of along the way. And the thing that, the example that came to my mind, and I say this because I discovered to my shock when I was campaigning last year, that I'd been losing hair on the back of my head, but since nobody ever takes pictures of me from behind, until somebody did in the campaign, I didn't know that. That's part of the reason why guys often do coneovers towards the end of going bald, because they're really trying to.
Don't talk about it.
So, I would just like to get some perspective on, are we allowed to use what to me would be a more commonsensical standard of looking at thresholds, saying, yeah, you know, when you go from losing the first chunk of the view, that's maybe acceptable, but losing the last chunk of the view, because it's totally gone, that's unacceptable, even if it's the same increment. So, I'm not sure who answers that, but.
Well, I'll try to answer that, and I certainly would welcome any further explanation. The whole with the idea of the loss of the view is first establishing what the city considers important viewpoints. So that's outlined in the document, in the setting. This is what the city says, in its general plan or general knowledge, these are what we think are the important views. And it tries to look at views generally open to the public, not individuals' views, for example, if you live in a high-rise, and you have a beautiful view out of the window, and a high-rise goes up next to you, that blocks your view, you know, that's not generally considered an adverse change in the environment under Sequo, because, you know, private views are not protected under Sequo. So when we make a determination on what, based on city documentation and past documentation, what the city itself has gone on record as saying, these are the important views from the city or to the city. And then we identify those viewpoints, or the vistas, and then whether or not the proposed project itself is going to have an adverse effect on those adopted views or view sheds. There's not a strict formula that says, if we lose half of it, it's less significant, if we lose 51% of it, then it's significant and we need to mitigate. It's really based on a professional judgment, and specific to whatever proposed project you're evaluating, and the setting in which that project is being constructed.
Which, if I may interrupt, just in the interest of time, given the conversation you and I had at the last meeting, at the end of the day, when a council member is choosing to, looking at elements of the EIR to decide if they're sufficient, it's our judgment that has to apply there. I mean, we can accept your judgment and say, hey, that makes sense to me.
Yes, of course.
But it's the judgment factor that comes into play.
When you adopt or deny the environmental document, you've said, we agree with the conclusions of the document analysis that's included in that document, or we don't agree with the analysis that's included in that document?
And I know I keep emphasizing this, but that's just because both for myself being relatively new, and others up here as well, it's, there's a natural tendency to try to look for, well, what are the rules I have to apply? And there are rules, but to some extent, those rules are, apply your judgment. And that's a critical distinction that I want to make sure that we all keep in mind.
And as we've always said from me, visual is a very difficult impact to evaluate. And, you know, unfortunately, if I can see the project, that doesn't mean it's necessarily an adverse effect or a significant impact.
I'm going to address both the visual issue briefly, and then the judgment. The Sequo checklist questions upon which thresholds are generally formed, in this particular issue, the view issue, it asks whether the project would substantially degrade the existing character or quality of the site and its surroundings. So I think the degree may come into it in substantially, so for instance, 10%, no matter what it might be, may not be a substantial degradation. In terms of the judgment on the EIR, Mr. Kay is correct that, and you are correct, that the EIR, in order for it to be certified, you do have to find that the EIR reflects your independent, the city's independent judgment and analysis. If you choose to come to a different conclusion than is currently in the EIR, that would actually mean that you would need to alter the text of the EIR. And whatever you do, needs to be based upon substantial evidence that's in the record. So, the analysis that's in the EIR now is obviously based upon the, you know, a number of scientists and technical experts that have come together to put together the document. That doesn't mean necessarily that you have to find that that reflects your independent judgment in the end. But if you want to come to a different conclusion and to change the EIR, that change also needs to be reflected in your findings of certification, and needs to be supported by evidence that's in the record.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask one quick follow-on question?
I'm following this very, as close as I can, so go ahead.
And I apologize for occupying the baton here, but this is sort of dovetailing into stuff. One of my other questions that I was going to ask was, when we, I've seen that language as well in my review of the Sequo legislation, about information in the record discussion in the record. My conclusion is that that is not limited to, for example, things like general plans, specific plans and whatnot, that those are part of the record, because they are part of the corpus that defines the city's thing, but there are other things that can go beyond that.
Yes, our discussion here is part of the record.
That was what I was getting to. Now, and presumably, there's some standard that says, we can't just capriciously on a lark say, oh, well, we're going to change something else. But if we have, if a majority of the council decides that there is reasonable substantive, and they can explain in some articulate fashion what it is, that too becomes part of the record.
Yes, but there still needs to be substantial evidence to back up the conclusions.
Evidence-based, yes, yes. Sorry, it can't just be, we all strongly feel that X is the case, so that can be some thing we can point to, to say, here's why we believe X.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How do you create substantial evidence? For instance, let's stick with the views, okay?
All the hard ones.
Well, no, here, to be serious here, substantial evidence, I, for instance, here's one of the things that I think about with this project, in terms of the views. We allowed for 1001 El Camino to be built, and, you know, we pushed some things around for that to happen, for the, make it a doable project for the developer, and there it is, it's built. It's four stories, it sits on the other side of El Camino, and I just imagine that building moving to the side of the El Camino where the Transit Village is proposed, and instead of having one, that's one block long, now I've got four or five buildings on the north side, and two buildings on the south side of Holly Street, that substantially look like 1001 El Camino. That to me is a degradation of views in San Carlos, be it for people who live on the east side and drive up and down their streets, they're the public, and for people who drive along Old County Road, be it people that are traversing through our city from Redwood City to Belmont, or for people who live in town and are just going over to Home Depot and coming back and so forth, already, to me, there's a degradation of views because of 1001 El Camino. To me, again, putting six of those on this side of the El Camino, is that evidence enough, or do I need something else?
It's more challenging with visual, because it is a very subjective topic, you know, it's a lot simpler with traffic and noise, where there are very clear numerical standards. Where the question is whether the project substantially degrades the visual character, it is largely going to be within your purview to make that determination. If you, you know, the visual simulations have been done, the experts that the city hired have opined that it's not a significant impact, however, should you choose to come to a different conclusion and feel that that's justifiable, you would need to alter the environmental impact report, and then we might need to discuss what steps would have to be taken, once you were to do that, if a majority of the city council were to move in that direction.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I could just add, I'm glad you brought up visual character, because I think your description about traveling on El Camino Real and the presence of the buildings really is not changing the views, but more the visual character of the experience of driving on El Camino Real.
No, actually, I mentioned, I did not talk about El Camino Real, not to be argumentative, but I was talking about, if you're driving, what more concerns me is when you're traversing Old County Road. And, you know, because right now, when you drive Old County Road, despite the grade separation, you can still see the San Carlos hills to the west, and, you know, a lot of blue sky.
And I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm not trying to complicate things, but I don't believe Old County Road is a scenic road as described in the city's general plan. And typically, on a personal note, I like to drive, so I am aware of my surroundings when I'm driving, but most analyses for visual impacts will read that driver's concentration is typically focused on driving, not looking at the view. So in giving your, you know, substantial evidence, that, those are the things that you're going to have to consider if you decide to change the conclusion presented in the environmental document.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes? I'd like to make a suggestion, and you may or may not like it. It's 11 o'clock, I have a feeling that yourself, certainly, and Mr. Olbert, have many more questions to ask, and I don't think, even if we stood this evening, we could possibly get them all answered. So my suggestion is that we continue this until the next meeting.
I'm fine with that, unless somebody.
Because I have a feeling it's going to go a lot more than 11:30 and a lot more than 11:45.
Yeah.
And this way, I think it'll be fresher. Mr. City Manager, is it appropriate for the next meeting that we will have a couple of three hours to, vis a vis your possible agenda?
I will do my best to endeavor to clear the items from the January 28 agenda, to the extent I can, I think there are.
I mean, we started at 10 o'clock. We started discussing at 10, we've only been doing it an hour.
Sure.
So I mean, we're going to go, we're going to have at least two or three hours of this, so I'm hopeful that we could start, God willing, by 8 o'clock next time.
Yeah, my guess is, it feels to me like the council is probably two, two and a half hours away.
Okay.
At the pace we're going.
Okay, well, again, I just wanted to make sure.
And like I said, we'll do our best to endeavor to clear as much off the agenda as we can, there are other business items, as there were tonight, based on timing, that just have to come forward, so.
Mr. City, do I need to make a motion to continue this? Or is this?
Yeah, this item would need to be continued to date certain.
A motion?
A motion would be required.
Okay, make a motion to continue this item until our next city council meeting, which would be January 28?
28th.
Second.
Christine, can I just do all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good suggestion, I didn't want to stay here until 4:00 in the morning.
You beat me to it.
Or adjourned. Sorry.